So we distributed over. We distributed flyers to over thirty locations, businesses, community centers, churches in the city. Our flyers were translated into five different languages, such as Arabic, Swahili, Vietnamese, Burmese, and forgetting one more, but we had, you know, we did that last year. We actually got some good results from that, so we decided to do it again this year. So with that, I will go into some of the numbers that we had from our attendance this year. So we had around eighty-five volunteers that showed up this year. Overall, we had over three hundred and sixty hours between everybody that participated. Over seventy-eight trash bags, full trash bags were collected. Eleven tires and some other, you know, large debris were removed. And overall, you know, we estimated about eighteen, over a little over eighteen hundred pounds of trash and debris were removed from, from the waterways. We kind of broke down the cost breakdown to just kind of give everybody an idea of how, what the cost for this promotional material, which included the flyers and the poster and the banners that were posted all around the city. You can see the number there, about three hundred and ninety bucks. Additional cleanup supplies, we actually ordered some pickup sticks for the city with the city logo on them, so we can have those for ourselves. But we also, you know, we'll still use Keep the Cat Beautiful as, as one of our partners. And refreshments, which were, we reached out to a local vendor. Everybody knows Refuge Coffee, so they were excited to partner with us. And they provided the, the, the donuts and the pastries, which were, you know, we got high remarks on that as well. So with that, this is actually came out cheaper to be this year than it was last year. So that's trending in the right direction, too. So I have some pictures that I just wanted to share with everybody. And I'll go through these quickly. These are pre-events. We had multiple groups, multiple church groups, nonprofits that came and volunteered. Some of the pictures of the events, you know, one of our sections was Mylon Park, as I mentioned before. Just various areas of the city. These were where the plantation apartments are right off Montreal. They had a, they had a very good collection. And so those were the pictures. And I guess towards conclusion, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to council and the mayor for, you know, working with us to put this event together. And the good news is that the Rivers Alive Board, which is one of our partners, they help, you know, provide some material to our cleanup events and also advertise it, you know, on the EPD website. So anybody can go on there if they're looking for a cleanup event, that's how they can find it. So about two weeks ago, I got an email that we were nominated for an award by Rivers Alive for the great cleanup event that we had in 2020. So actually, on Thursday, they're having a ceremony. And we were very excited about, you know, about the event, about this award. And, uh, you know, if I can, if anybody is interested to join, I can probably find the, the link and send it to you if you would like to be, you know, watch it on Zoom. Again, big thank you to all the volunteers. We had a great turnout, Public Works Department. We can't thank them enough for their work. We had Keep the Cat Beautiful, Keep Cop Beautiful. I had to borrow some stuff from them this year, last minute, and they came through. Rivers Alive, obviously, as we talked about. Envision Atlanta, they're a nonprofit group, right next to Friendship Forest. Actually, they, um, you know, they were key in providing some volunteers. Send Relief. They provided the transportation with their pens. And that was the helpful assist that they had. Clarkston International Bible Church, same thing. They provided transportation for our volunteers to different locations. True Church of God, they as well helped with the transportation. And they also brought probably about fifteen or twenty of their members. And Refuge Coffee, as I mentioned. And lastly, we had two scout troops that sent some scouts and they wanted to get some volunteer hours in. And, you know, we were happy that they, that they showed up and it was a great event. So we look forward to next year and possibly even more throughout the year. We heard a lot of positive comments from residents and participants that they would like to do it more and more throughout the year. So we'll explore those options, but definitely in 2022, we'll, we'll have another great event around February, March. Thank you.
Thank you, Cash, for the presentation. And again, thank you to our staff and all of the community that was involved. Are there any other comments from the council at this time? None? Any comments from the public? Mr. Gomez?
Nobody signed up to speak on this item.
I think, yes, okay, perfect. All right, so again, thank you, everyone. And so we'll move on to old business, which is item D1. Amend section three fifty-eight, new licenses permitted for certain designated businesses to define and permit a retail delivery shop to sell and deliver packaged beer, malt beverages, and/or wine as a qualified business in the city of Clarkston. Ms. Cowie?
Madam Mayor, thank you. As per the previous discussions at the mayor and city council meeting, this request is from Go Puff to amend section three dash five eight, new licenses for certain designated businesses to define and permit the business as a retail delivery shop to sell packaged beer, malt beverages, and/or wine in the city of Clarkston. Also, by adding the definition of retail delivery shop, which will be defined as a retail establishment, which is engaged in the retail sale of food products, household goods, and other sundry items for delivery only that has a total interior floor area of not more than ten thousand square feet. Madam Mayor?
Sorry, I was unmuting myself. Thank you, Ms. Cowie. Council, did you have any other? Do we have the applicant on the call? Ms. Kelly? Can you hear me?
We do not have anybody representing the applicant, so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Council, did you have additional discussion about this item? Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, well, I think we did discuss this thoroughly and, um, I do remember, um, my position on this. I personally, um, was the only one who actually was against imposing the moratorium the last time it was placed. And, um, the rationale for the moratorium was the fact that there were too many places that sell alcohol by the package. And, um, it was, um, it was supposed to, to encourage, um, like a different kind model, which, but, but we're all brick and mortar places and it was, there was no mention of a delivery business. And, uh, uh, this is a new concept, is a new, uh, idea. And, um, but at the end of the day, they are all delivering the same product, alcohol. And I think to me, if we're gonna say we have a moratorium, however, allow at the same time, uh, for a delivery, I don't see the effectiveness of the moratorium at this point, if we're gonna allow this. But if we're gonna allow it, we should just liberalize it all and allow if somebody wants to open a brick and mortar as well. Because there will be no excuse for us to say you can't do this once we open the can. So I really, um, I'm, I'm really have no, um, I mean, I'm, I'm not against the idea, but if we're gonna have to, to allow this kind of business, we're gonna have to allow also mortar and brick because they're all delivering alcohol. They'll, I, I don't see, uh, any justification of, um, banning, um, brick and mortar while we allow a delivery business. So I really am open to hear from council, why it would be because now we got Go Path applying, requesting to, to amend our ordinance. What if the next person comes here is gonna also do the same thing? They're gonna ask us to amend our ordinance. So are we gonna amend our ordinances every time one applicant asks us to do so? I don't, I really don't see this. But if we allow Go Puff, we should allow everybody if they wanted to come in and fulfill all their requirements, including distance from church or distance from schools. I think they should be allowed as well. So I, I really want to look at this in light of the moratorium. If we did not have a moratorium, this would have been an easy path to me. But since we have had a moratorium, I don't really, uh, understand how we're gonna be able to, legitimize our vote and say, oh, we can allow only delivery but not brick and mortar. So I have really concern with, with the idea of amending our ordinance and, and just to accommodate one applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu, for your comments and your feedback. Council members, did you have any additional comments at this time you'd like to make? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I have a question, uh, probably for the vice mayor. What was, and possibly for the mayor, because I believe you were on the council at the time when it passed. What was the reason given for having the moratorium on alcohol licenses?
I think I said it a minute ago, but the reason was the fact that there were fifteen, I remember, and there was only one more added to that list. And that was the gas station, because they already had ground broken, uh, to build the gas station while we were discussing this. And, um, they didn't know that, I mean, they, they had no idea that they can't have alcohol. And then they were stuck and eventually they were allowed. So that makes them, I think, the seventeenth place, but we have never had anybody else apply so far. And, um, and the ration, the, the reasoning was, uh, with, according to the council, which I wasn't really on that side of, was that we have too many places, uh, which sell alcohol. And we wanted to, to have a cap basically and, and just to allow them to continue operating, but there will be no more new license. Even to make it worse, they can't even sell their business more than once. They can't transfer their license, let alone open a new one. So this is really, uh, is gonna give the, this new model a total domination, because they will, they will be able to sell and resell their business. It doesn't matter at any time, while the other brick and mortar businesses cannot sell their businesses once they transfer their license one time. So it's really, there is a lot of can worms. If we open this, I think this is not, it's not gonna be, um, easy to put it back again. So the rationale was we have too many liquor stores.
Yeah, but when you say too many liquor stores, is the intended outcome to reduce the consumption of alcohol or to just reduce the amount of our retail commercial space dedicated to alcohol? I mean, is it like we want a city that's not all malt liquor shops? And, and that's what we have to offer? We've all driven through those neighborhoods. You can buy malt liquor cigarettes or get buried, and that's pretty much their commercial district, which I think we don't want to be. Or are we thinking the more places that we have that sell alcohol, the more it encourages people to drink alcohol? Are we?
I mean, think about it this way, Councilwoman Hopkins. Vice Mayor Yasu said we had seventeen in a one point six square mile radius. That's a lot when you sit back and think about it. And so that was part of why we were saying in terms of the reduction in the amount of businesses that cater to that. Because, you know, we're also looking towards the future in terms of how and what we want the city to look like, right? And so we already have seventeen establishments that sell alcohol. I mean, I think that's quite a few, if you sit back and think about that.
And this is Councilman Carroll. One other thing I would say is that the previous law also allowed for growlers and wine shops. So it didn't set a total cap on the number of, you know, if they could sell alcohol. They could still open as many growlers, stores, or wine shops, or breweries, or other, you know, different types of alcohol sales. So we could have had, you know, up to like thirty or forty or however many growlers or wine shops that wanted to open. It just banned liquor stores and gas stations. So you could say it really, I wouldn't say it was a cap on the total amount of alcohol sold. It's so much as it is a cap on the certain kinds of stores that sell alcohol.
And then as the council, we have the opportunity to vote up or down any additional alcohol licenses, too.
Okay.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu. And then we'll go back.
I just wanna add that it's true that the cap is not really, cannot work, uh, Councilmember Hopkins, because somebody can buy as much as alcohol from one store or whether we have ten stores. That really would not matter, because, I mean, we can always, um, I mean, the consumption cannot be reduced by, by, I mean, you understand what I mean? Somebody can buy as much as he wants from one store or two stores, whether, um, I mean, within one point five square mile, all you have to do is just walk a little more. But, um, the idea was, I think, Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Burke said it properly, that, um, we did not want, I mean, the council did not want, um, to have too many liquor stores every corner and/or, uh, packaged stores every corner. And that's why it was, um, put out more, a permanent moratorium, basically. So now, and, and the thing is, growlers, yes, were allowed, and also specialty wine shops were allowed. But this new applicant is neither, is not a growler, is not, they don't even have a, I mean, um, they, they're not gonna, uh, follow the same, uh, rules that the brick and mortar follows. So, um, they, I mean, they don't fit into this ordinance whatsoever unless we change it for them. But if we change it for them, what is to stop somebody else from coming and asking us, why you stopping brick and mortar, why you allowing delivery business? So I really, I really have contradiction on this. That's all I'm trying to say.
And Councilwoman Hopkins, you had another comment or follow-up?
Just that I see granting, um, because it's a business model that simply didn't exist at the time when the moratorium was passed. And I think a sort of warehouse-only delivery business that does not have a retail space taking up, you know, our sort of very limited precious retail space with more corner liquor stores. I, I don't think that sort of creates the, uh, retail clutter that I think the original moratorium was intended to prevent. And so I personally would be in favor of it. I think initially, and actually until I went to their website, I was very skeptical of the whole thing, because the food they list to me, in my world, doesn't even count as food. But when you go to their website, you actually could order like food to eat, especially I saw some comments on there from their customers who were sick, who had COVID. They have money, but they're like, bring me some food, bring me a glass of wine. Let me just stay here and hunker down and not leave. And I think that that is not a bad thing. And it also does preserve our retail space for the other types of businesses that we would like to develop or at least broaden, have more diversity in our businesses than just gas stations and liquor stores. So I would support it. I would actually question the limitation that was put in it on ten thousand square feet, because I think if there is a larger, not like an Amazon warehouse, not that I would be averse to that, except we have no place to put it. But, um, you know, a bigger grocery store even, I would be okay with that. I don't think it's, it's contributing to that, that retail clutter. And I would want to avoid that. I would want to keep it from being just every other business is a liquor store. But I think this is contributing to that. But it is a business model that just didn't exist at the time when the moratorium was created. So we would have to address it one way or the other, simply because we didn't have the option of addressing it at the time when it was created.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. Are there any other council members that have input on this item?
This is cool. Members. I did have a couple, a couple of, um, questions, um, just on, on limiting, you know, since, since some of the burn, you know, it is, uh, you know, being a new industry. If there is ways to, uh, to legally limit the definite number of retail store shops and infringe or potentially complete as much with, with some of our other, um, business types, which is within the category. And, uh, in particular, perhaps that's a, that's a zoning question, you know? So it's limited to, you know, to more of the industrial area, more of the warehouse specific, not necessarily a storefront or front, uh, you know, you know, zoning. I'm just being forward-thinking with it. The second hint, um, piece, I believe this was brought up during a public comment at the last work session, was also seeing, uh, any kind of event that they could hold, or, and I think it's a provision within the state. The bill is what allows for tasting events. And so I don't know if that's, uh, if this is saying, you know, as Council, Council asked you was mentioning, where if we, you know, if we all this, there's sort of, it's kind of out of our hands. If there's a way to, you know, to, to set some boundaries around the space where this can operate in the, in the beginning. So I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about that. You know, so, so we're not, we're not opening the gates completely. We're, we're kind of allowing a little bit of this, you know, testing period, just to sort of see what the impact this is. And I think at that point as well, limiting it to ten, ten thousand square feet instead of just a massive warehouse, I think could also be, also be a, you know, a positive thing, uh, just for.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Perkins. And
I think Deborah, Councilwoman Johnson had her hand up, and then Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanted to let, um, council know that I did have the privilege of speaking with some of our residents in the community, community after having a conversation with Go Puff as well as before. And I can't find a single resident that feel that this service is needed in the city of Clarkston. So, um, that was one thing that I was very conscientious of, is the need for it here as well as, and I did ask Go Puff, was this something that was, um, the community reached out or you picked us because our activity level was higher? And she said, no, it's just them wanting to branch out and do some other things because they were available now. But I haven't found not one resident out of twelve on different sides of the city that see this being a posi, having a positive impact on the city. And, you know, my whole hangup is, I can't verify ID at the door. I can't verify that they're gonna check ID at the door. And if you're just a delivery driver, are you gonna leave it at the door? They did clarify some things for me on the call, the last call, but I still do not see this, um, being a need in the city of Clarkston at this time. So I'm totally against it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, and Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, I also would like to ask a question, because if we're gonna say this is okay, I'm just curious if, uh, in the future, what is to stop? The whole idea was to stop the mushrooming of this kind of, uh, cor, corner liquor stores. But what is gonna stop other people such as Amazon from coming and applying now? Once we allow this, once we open this gate, what is to stop other applicants from coming? Because there will be no justification for us. They'll be like, okay, you deliver business, you're welcome to come to Clarkston. That's what we're telling them, basically. So I'm not sure how we're gonna handle, uh, future applica, applications. If we're gonna allow one business, so the moratorium in effect is dead, basically. So I really, so we're giving them a, a way around it, which is, okay, you just gotta do, do delivery. Don't, don't do, uh, brick and mortar. While, as a matter of fact, this business actually does have a brick and mortar place, though, not at the center of our city or, but still, they do have a brick and mortar, which is their office in Clarkston, which is fine with me. But, um, again, I really don't wanna feel I'm against this kind of business, but I'm not. I just have a problem while, with the, with the hypocrisy while allowing, uh, this and not allowing brick and mortar, which that's the only concern I have. And, uh, and also, how are we gonna stop others from coming and applying for the same kind of business?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. We have Councilwoman Hopkins. And you're on mute.
Uh, what we are considering right now, and maybe this is, um, a question for the city attorney, but this item is not actually requesting that we grant them a license to sell. It's requesting that we adopt what was adopted sort of statewide within our city to allow this business mo, model to be the type of business that could apply for a liquor license or could sell liquor, like that a delivery business could be considered as someone who could apply for a liquor license. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins, that is exactly correct. That any establishment, including this one, or Amazon, if they wanted to come in, would need to get licenses from both the city and then the state to actually start selling the alcohol for delivery. And it's true also that the state has changed its law to allow this, but that the city doesn't have to allow it, and currently it does not.
Thank you. So we could technically, it would be a weird thing to do, but we could technically approve this and then still not approve Go Puff for a new alcohol license?
Well, I mean, of course, there would need to be a legitimate, objective reason not to approve them. But, you know, conceptually, yes, that's correct. This is not Go Puff's application. This is, they're just the ones who made the recommendation or request that we change our code. So the council should definitely be thinking of this in ti, in terms of, you know, uh, non-retail or as they call it, retail delivery shops, generically. It could be, anybody could be a retail delivery shop, and they would all be taken one by one when they actually wanted to start selling alcohol and delivering it.
Right. So I feel like this is, um, addressing our, well, would be the city addressing what the state chose to do, which is allow reach, uh, allow delivery of alcohol for retail delivery. But we could say, yes, that would be a legitimate model for an alcohol license. And then also say, we are also still going to continue our moratorium on new alcohol licenses. But when we do start issuing them, it could be a liquor store, a gas station, a grocery store, or a delivery store, if and when we should ever decide there is room for more places that sell alcohol.
But Steve, Stephen, can you clarify? There's a little bit of, I believe, perhaps some confusion. I mean, this, this is, as you stated, a, a request to expand the definition of those that can obtain the license. the license. Uh, but currently, any existing establishment can deliver per the change in state code. They can deliver the sale of, you know, beer, wine and liquor, correct?
That is exactly correct. So we already have numerous authorized delivery businesses of at, delivery alcohol businesses in the city. Fifteen or however many of those are still operating have built into their license now a privilege to deliver.
Yes. This item again is, and again, another category, and I do, just for clarification, I, as Councilman Carroll stated, what the council did a few years ago was not adopt a moratorium, they simply limited the scope or the definition of the types of businesses that could sell beer, wine, malt beverages or liquor. Uh, and because of the, apparently the proliferation, and just to provide you some data, some statistics, in the city of Clarkston and our one point five, one point six square miles, we currently have seven restaurants and one adult use establishment that can sell beer, wine, malt beverages and liquor. We then have four liquor stores. That, I'm sorry, let me go back. The restaurants and the adult use can sell for consumption on premise. The four liquor stores sell packaged beer, wine, malt beverages and liquor. Again, four liquor stores. So that's twelve total. We have eight gas stations. The eight gas stations have it, for lack of a better term, a mini mart inside them or a convenience store. They all sell beer, wine and malt beverages. So now we're up to twenty. Thrift Town Grocery Store sells beer, wine and malt beverages. We're at twenty-one. There are four other convenience stores that have a license to sell beer, wine or malt beverages. That's twenty-five. The, I believe the grocery store over at Tahoe Village that obtained new ownership last year or late in nineteen, they have expressed that they will be applying, I don't recall if they did apply, to under this city code as a grocery store to sell beer, beer, wine uh, and or malt liquor. So that would be twenty-six businesses within the city of Clarkston that sell beer, wine, malt liquor and beer, wine, malt beverages, excuse me, and or liquor. Uh, so just to give you some background on it, a- again, this item, so that everybody is clear, simply requesting an expansion of the definition of the types of businesses that could sell, can obtain a license from the city of Clarkston. They still need one from the state to be able to sell beer, wine and or malt beverages.
And this is Councilman Carroll, another question possibly for Stephen. So let's say Tucker authorized GoPuff to have a license, have a warehouse in Tucker. Could GoPuff then deliver to Clarkston customers from that Tucker location under the current law?
The answer to that is no. The, the delivery cannot cross over a municipal boundary. So under the state law and the proposed Clarkston code amendment, the retail, there has to be a location, not necessarily open to retail sales, but physically there and where the beer is, you know, or wine is, starts the transaction in the same city where the delivery gets to the customer.
So they would. Vice, well, wait a minute, Vice Mayor Yasu, and then you, then, then Councilwoman Hopkins.
Thank you. So I have two questions to our city attorney. So um, I just want clarification. So, so the state never had a moratorium on or, or specification uh, like saying uh, growler or none of that. The, the state just added this um, to all the existing business models. Am I correct?
So uh, I think it's a little more complicated. I'll try to make it brief. The, the state categorizes in two ways, what kind of alcoholic beverage and whether it's going to be consumed um, in a, from an open package in the property or consumed off the property. So previously, the state had not allowed delivery in the category or in either category, but the, the, the group of I sell it for consumption not on my property, which is everything we're talking about here, could not deliver and they changed the law to allow them to deliver. Yeah, I think that's maybe a little bit different than what, the way you stated it, but the state, what they changed is just to allow delivery rather than, so you, they take it to the customer rather than the customer coming to their store.
Okay. And um, so my second question is, how do we know um, where the, do we have any control or do we have any access to as to where the alcohol is being delivered? Cause I'm really now curious to think about it. So why would GoPuff come to this tiny little one and half square mile city that already have sixteen liquor stores and try to get a lic- a license to deliver within this tiny little city? I'm just curious. So how do we know where?
So how would, we wouldn't, I guess we wouldn't know unless it got reported to us somehow, like any other kind of code violation. But you're right. I mean, we're certainly, I don't think we intend to um, you know, follow them around with a police officer and see where they go. But by the state law, they wouldn't be able to deliver outside of the jurisdiction. So I, I mean, my, I guess my best answer would be there's probably some, they're using um, computer apps to do this. So if there was some kind of report like that, you might be able to get the state to look into it.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Now, if I understand correctly, GoPuff is already here, like.
Yes.
A headquarters here. So this is not them coming here to do this. This is
An expansion of their existing business.
Of their existing business. And, but if they are selling, they could only sell within the city of Clarkston from their Clarkston headquarters, correct?
Well, they could sell a sandwich to anybody. But as far as alcohol, they could only sell from Clarkston to Clarkston.
Okay. So it would be purely for the Clarkston people. Okay. So it's not like if we say no, then they would continue with whatever business they've been doing, but it's not like they would want to just pick up and have their warehouse leave Clarkston and go to Tucker where they might be, you know, able to expand. But it wouldn't make any difference because they still could only sell to that city. So okay, that's, that's an interesting thought. But, okay. I, I'm, I'm still inclined to think that since it doesn't contribute to what we were trying to avoid and because it is a, a delivery only business model, is not a business model that was, could be considered before, and I don't think it does cause the kind of uh, retail clutter. I think it would be nice to be able to order a bunch of food and throw a bottle of wine on there as well and, you know, like adults, just be able to not be that controlling of, of our residents. I, I, my, my goal, and I, I kind of feel like this was the original one, is again, not completely aesthetic, but to want more from our retail space than just one or two kinds of business. And I think this doesn't limit that. So I encourage healthy business, a healthy economy. Um, if it does reduce people driving home from our bars and restaurants, uh, I think that's probably a safer bet.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. Uh, council, you have really given some great thought and input and questions. Do you have any other questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, Mr. Gomez, did we have anyone sign up for this?
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Thank you, Mr. Medford.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I think I stated it in the previous meeting, but I'll go ahead and say it again, that it's not a tough, it's a tough decision, but I still back approving this idea. I'd still like to see it done on a one-year test basis. Uh, just to see how things plan out. Uh, thank you, Stephen Quinn, for clearing up some of the issues that, uh, questions about this, especially with the, uh, somebody would have to have a location here in the city that would absolutely prevent Amazon from getting a license here. But they'd have to have an actual uh, location somewhere in a warehouse to deliver out of. I am also, as I mentioned before, as almost been killed by two drunk drivers already in my life, so people can stay home and drink. I am all for it. Uh, also, I don't think that approving this means we have to throw the doors open to allow brick and mortar liquor stores again. Um, that's not, that's not, that's a false dichotomy. You, you, you don't have to do both. Um, we're gonna be, this is just saying we're gonna allow it. Nobody's getting a liquor license approved uh, next week. So there's still things there. And frankly, we've already punched holes through that ordinance a couple of times, just for convenience and to benefit one group or one uh, business. Uh, it should absolutely stop, but it could also be applied with some thought. So this, yeah, it's technically, if they apply for a liquor license, we would have to apply it. As mayor already said, the council can approve liquor license anyway. Uh, but this, as Councilwoman Hopkins brought up, when this was written years ago, who would have thought about we all needing delivery right now? So, and this is one of those things that, you know, business model in the way I would have thought of, and we need to modernize our laws to uh, to include something like this. So uh, I'm in favor of it. Um, it's not perfect, but I think it outweighs the, the bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medford. Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up?
Not for this item, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we will conclude this item and move on to D two, which is amend the city charter to modernize certain provisions to amend Article Four of the Charter Regarding Budgeting, Appropriation and Auditing to repeal conflicting provisions. Um, we have this from the uh, Charter Review Committee, I think Ms. Hood is on, and this was something brought up by Councilwoman Johnson and as a follow-up to some issues in terms of the wording. And I think I'll leave this to Mr. Quinn to start the discussion. Mr. Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, well, this item was originally recommended by the Charter Review Committee uh, over a long period of time. And I believe from our meetings last month that the council is all in concurrence uh, regarding all but one of the recommendations. So the one recommendation in question is concerning the text of the Oath of Office for elected officials and appointed officials. And specifically, it currently ends with so help me God. And the council had a discussion about uh, that current text as well as three alternatives at the last regular meeting and deferred to this work session for further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn, for that update. Uh, council, we, we did agree to everything except for the last component of the so help me God. And so it was a matter of, do we eliminate that? Do we say that it's an option? Or um, so the three options are um, so help me God, to keep this existing text, remove the reference to a higher power and have that oath with the name of the office. Um, at the third option is at the option of the oath taker, he or she may elect to declare so help me God. And the fourth option is here the oath taker may insert a solemn declaration invoke, invoking the deity or higher power of the oath taker's choice or elect not to do so. So at this time, we can have the discussion from the council is how we want to proceed. Option one, two, three or four, council. Because the other piece to this, as a reminder, we have to do two votes for this to be updated to the charter. And when we make those two votes, it has to be on the same item, so we cannot modify it. So whatever decision we need to make, we need to make sure that we make it today so that when we go to our meeting, our council meeting next week, and then the following council meeting next month, it is the same verbiage that we will vote on or you will vote on. Council, at this time, we can have discussion about which one. I see Vice, I see Councilman Carroll. Councilman Carroll, please.
Uh, I would support the fourth option because that would allow people the option to still say so help me God, or if they want to invoke another higher power to ask that help, or if they don't want help from any God or higher power, they also have the option to not do that. So I would let people choose.
Uh, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Thank you for recognizing me. I don't think I had my hand up, but I will say, yes, I agree. The fourth option allows everyone uh, the choice and doesn't mandate a religion. I think it, all of us on the council uh, took an oath to uphold the constitution. The constitution clearly says we cannot establish a religion by the state. And I think um, leaving each person to their own conscience and their own faith is probably the only reasonable and fair way to go. So I would say option four.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I would say option four. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Thank you. Um, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I think uh, there's a consensus on option four. Um, it seems reasonable. Uh, but I would say option three uh, because um, that is the same, it has almost the same meaning. It just does not allow somebody not to leave it out. It just asks you whether you either say it or you don't say it. It doesn't allow you to, I'm not sure what is the difference, but I think either three or four is fine with me.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hassan. Councilman Hassan. We'll come back to Councilman Hassan. Uh, Councilman Perkins.
Uh, yeah, I'm in agreement. I think option three or four, uh, as far as, you know, I'm concerned with working. One, one concern I had, you know, so I was thinking through this, this is, you know, I think there's always balance of, of, of being open enough for different expressions, but you know, how, how far as to, you know, is there, you know, any risk of uh, having it so open, someone could, could make a review of the oath of office is, you know, with it. I don't, I don't know if there's any limitations we should consider on that. Um, in that case, something like option three, um, while it is limiting, um, uh, but uh, you know, you know, could lend itself to a little more, more, more of a regard on it um, than, than in four, but I would support either one of this.
Okay. And uh, Councilman Hassan, are you on the line now? Can you provide your opinion? Okay. So based on the responses that we had today, yes, uh, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Uh, it just dawned on me that when it says oath taker on item four, may insert a solemn declaration, we may want to say two ten word, like, so it doesn't become a dissertation, just a thought. Cause if we don't give them, for example, something like so help me God, they might think that that is a profession of their faith and start to testify. And I think we'd want to limit the length of our meetings.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, so based on the comments from the council, and I did a query intentionally so that we could make sure in terms of this vote to proceed forward. We have a majority that says that they would be okay with option four. Are, do we have any other discussion? I just wanted to make sure for the sake of uh, Mr. Quinn drawing up the appropriate language for us to vote upon.
Yeah.
Councilman Hassan. It's option four, okay. Okay. All right. So I've given the council opportunity to speak, to provide their input. Any other discussion as it relates to this item? Hearing none, Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign, anyone sign up for this particular item?
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford, please speak.
Yes, uh, thank you very much for coming up with these awesome options uh, to, for this. Yes, uh, thank you very much for coming up with these awesome options to, for this discussion. Um, I'm glad, it sounds like there might be some consensus here. I just want to implore everybody to get this on the road. If this is, if section 311 is gonna continue to be a sticking point, let's just pull it off for now. So if we could, please, just go ahead and get this thing moving, uh, because we're gonna be due for another Charter Review Committee here soon at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Mr. Gomez, do we have any other comments on this item?
Yes, Mr. Hadlock.
Mr. Hadlock, please speak. Thank you.
Yes, uh, well, as a former member, maybe I'm still on a Charter Review Committee. I think we offered you a good, simple, clear, non-problematic choice, and I urge you to stick with it. You opened up a can of worms with all this discussion, and it's very simple to just say, "I swear" or "I affirm", and end with the, uh, end with the name of the office. And you start saying, you can insert whatever you want to. You could get a little crazy. I could say "so help me Lord Satan", just to be, just to, uh, raise a few eyebrows or whatever. Uh, we don't, you, you guys have a simple choice here. I, I really urge you to to stick with it, but, uh, you wanna make it complicated and, uh, you know, it's up to you. Okay, I recommend option 2. I've already done that before.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hadlock. And again, we want to really emphasize and thank the Charter Review Committee for their diligence in making sure that they provided and reviewed the documents, our governing documents, and made these recommendations. So, Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else who has a comment at this time?
Whoever's the phone number, 404-234-0073, requested to speak on all the items from now going forward.
Okay, thank you. Whoever that individual is, would you state your name, please? And speak? Would you state your name?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, uh, Mr. Bussie?
Well, yes, uh, well, I did not care to speak on this item. I wanted to speak on the alcohol item, but I'm off timing, I guess. I can't speak on that.
Thank you for making sure, clarifying for us. Mr. Gomez, is anyone else?
No others, man.
Okay, thank you very much. And so at this time, we will, without any further discussion from the council, any further discussion from the council, we will proceed. We heard from the council a consensus on item option 4. So we will proceed with option 4 for Mr. Quinn to make sure to make the updates to the document, so then we will be able to vote next week. And then follow that vote with the vote for the June council meeting. Is there any other discussion before we proceed with this item, so that we can move forward and not have to move this again as an, as an old business item? Okay, hearing none, we will proceed now to new business, and we will discuss item E1, which is the adoption of an ordinance to annex 1145 Cleve Mark Drive, Clarkston, Georgia 30021, into the city of Clarkston, Ms. Cowie. Ms. Cowie? I think you're on mute. I don't know if you can hear. Ms. Cowie, we can't hear you. Can you hear me now? There's an echo. There's an echo. Give her a moment to get it. Can you hear me now? Kind of an echo. You have two lines going at the same time. Mr. Gomez, while Ms. Cowie is, is adjusting her phone, can you start this agenda item for us?
Mayor, council, the item is to adopt the, an ordinance to bring into the city of Clarkston or to annex the parcel located at 1145 Cleve Mark Drive, parcel number 1811908023, currently located, uh, mostly, most of it, probably over 80% of it, it currently in unincorporated DeKalb County. Uh, we had a request from the property owner to, to do that. They have met all the requirements per city code. DeKalb County provided to, uh, the approval when we requested the parcel to, for us to approve the request to be brought into the city. The county did not object. Uh, so the item is simply for, to adopt the ordinance to allow, uh, there will be two ordinances, one for the annexation, and the second one related to the zoning of, of the property. The, I don't, I think the, one of the applicants is on the call. Uh, let me try to guess, admit Ms. Cowie. Shawana, are you there?
I think Mr. or Mr. Pulling?
Yeah, Mr. Pulling, if you're available, if you'd like to add anything to the item.
Uh, yes, from a perspective of having the, the road which services the properties in Clarkston, the portion of the property that the house is going to be, uh, built on is going, is in Clarkston, and it just made sense to us to have a single jurisdiction be responsible. And we found that, uh, the Clarkston, uh, municipality has been very effective working with us, uh, to this point, and we think that the annexation would be advantageous, so we can, uh, proceed with building a home, hopefully sometime this year.
Thank you, Mr. Pulling, and we look forward to having new neighbors come into our city. So we, hopefully the council will vote this in, and we can say, "Welcome to Clarkston officially, all your property." Uh, Ms. Cat, yes, Mr. Gomez.
And Mayor, I wanted to add the, related to the process, uh, there, there, as I stated, there are two ordinances that will need to be approved. As I said, one, approving the annexation of the listed parcel, and the second one to approve the new zoning, uh, clar, or zoning category, zoning district, uh, to the property. Uh, as Ms. Cowie stated in the agenda item, there have been no indication, we did not find of any previous zoning or annexation requests involving the parcel. Uh, once, if the council approves the annexation, the subsequent zoning would be, uh, single-family residential to match the adj, uh, adjacent.
Adjacent, uh, property.
At least.
Getting that call.
Cowie's on. I'm on. I had to. Usually I sign in on both, so I won't have technical difficulties, but I do apologize. I had to shut my phone off, but just like, uh, Mr. Pulling did state, Madam Mayor, for the annexation request, again, um, this annexation request is, um, the property owner states that it's 40% in the city limits of Clarkston and 60% in unincorporated DeKalb. So to follow the process for 100% annexation, they were required to submit to Mayor and Council for consideration, the property to be approved, and it must have been located in an unincorporated area and contiguous to an existing property in the city limits of Clarkston. That is the first, again, as the city manager was stating, that is the first process of the annexation request to receive an approval or a decision for the annexation. That is our first step. Our next step is E2. Thank you, Ms. Cowie. And counsel, is there any discussion at this point on this agenda item? Vice Mary Yasu, and then Councilwoman Hopkins.
I, I think I just want to say, um, just like Mayor Burke said it, uh, that, um, um, I, I just, uh, want to welcome them and, um, and, um, I think I'm glad to hear that, uh, he, they have a positive, uh, perception of our city, uh, which we want to continue, uh, preserving, and, uh, we want to like, continue serving them as well. So, uh, I think, um, since it seems like it, it, it fits the criteria, which includes, um, being, um, adjacent to, uh, City of Clarkston, which the property itself half of it is. So I think, uh, this is really a number enough to me. Thanks.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I just want to clarify with Mr. Pulling, this is it for a home for yourself, is that correct?
Uh, actually, yes. So, uh, Taylor will be living in this house.
Right, so, but yeah, it's not, you're not, um, a developer looking to build and sell. Well, in that case, that makes me very happy. Um, welcome.
Great.
I love it when people want to.
It's been built for less than 20 years, so.
Excellent.
Any other comments from the council at this time? Councilman Carroll.
I, I do have one, kind of, this is more a question to see me and you than a comment in this particular project. It seems like the way that our boundaries are drawn with a perfect circle on at least part of the boundary, that there are a lot of properties like this that are partially in and partially out. And I wondered if there had been any consideration to approaching, uh, the other property owners that have properties partially in and partially out, and seeing if they're considered to annexation, because it seems to make sense if, you know, if a part of parcel is in the city and part is in the county, to just let one entity do all the code enforcement for that property rather than splitting it up.
There, I mean, Shawana, I think you can clarify better, but there are very many.
There are not. Um, actually, the property that we are referring to at 1145, um, Cleve Mark was submitted to DeKalb County, and Mr. Pulling can also elaborate on this issue as well, for, um, water and sewer through DeKalb County, when they informed him that partially his property was in the city limits of Clarkston and unincorporated DeKalb. So we would needed to, um, um, establish where he wanted to be, and he did decide, as you all know, that he wanted to be 100% in the city of Clarkston. So it was from a permitting, um, perspective, that he wanted to make sure that he was 100% in the city of Clarkston to make sure that he follows the permitting process for the city of Clarkston, and of course, to follow the zoning regulations for, um, the assigned zoning district. The rest of the properties that's next to it, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, is already developed. So, uh, Councilman Carroll, to your question. Thanks, Mayor Yasu.
I, I think I agree with Councilmember Carroll. Uh, I know this is off-topic, but, uh, I think that there's, that we definitely could, um, do an inventory of these properties that actually are not fully within the city limit, or which are partially unmet, and, um, so maybe we could, um, make sure, uh, we can reach them out, or, um, could, uh, see if they wanted to be part of the city, uh, so we, I mean, we could do it all at once together and, um, that would be, and a lot of people might, probably don't even know, so I think that might be, uh, a surprise to them, so it might be, uh, some helpful information for, for a lot of property owners.
Thank you, Vice Mary Yasu. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. Any comments from the public, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, we have Kathy Burrows.
Burrows. Unmute yourself. You're not unmuted. There we go. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for including my comments, and welcome, Mr. Pulling. I, I had similar questions to Laura Hopkins. I just had a couple of questions. As a fellow resident of Cleve Mark Drive, I just wanted to get clarity about a couple of things, just out of curiosity. I'm not seeing exactly where you are on Cleve Mark Drive. Are you facing the lake property? Are you at the end of the road? I'm not, sorry, I tried to find the, I'm just trying to understand. Pardon?
The property, as you can see on the screen, Ms. Burrows is outlined in blue, is 1145 Cleve Mark. Which is in the cul-de-sac.
It's at the cul-de-sac of Cleve Mark, next to the house of, is that correct? I couldn't hear. I was, can you just show me with a arrow exactly? Is it on the right?
Can you hear me?
If you're able to look at the screen, it's the one that's highlighted in the.
There's a lot of, uh, a lot of extraneous sound.
So, um, Ms. Cowie, maybe just hold for a second. Uh, if you look right now, if you see the area that's highlighted in blue, that is the area or the property that we have for discussion tonight.
So is it, does it jot into the property that was considered for a larger development project some years back? Is it, is it part of that same parcel? Or connected to that same parcel? And would it lead to any future development, or is this a one-off request?
The applicant has requested to build a single-family home.
Would, would this in any way open up that opportunity to redevelop that whole back area that was once under consideration? I'm just trying to get clarity about that.
Again, uh, Mr. Pulling is on the phone, um, if you have any additional questions for him, but he has stated to the city that they will construct a single-family residential home only and preserve as many of the trees that are currently located on the property as possible. He is not a developer, and his son is not a developer. They are requesting to build a single-family home.
Um, if I might just chat with Mr. Pulling directly, that would be great. Mr. Pulling, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, welcome. Um, I just was trying to get clarity, if you have any future intentions of further developing that area, or if this is just a personal desire for a residential home for a family member.
Yeah, we don't actually want any more houses there. We would like to have one. And, uh, the whole point of it is it, it looks a little bit like a national forest, and with one house, it is gonna look like one house in a national forest, which is exactly what we're trying to achieve.
Great, that sounds great. Um, I just, are you facing the lake or the pond, you know, I'm, I'm tr, or are you?
Uh, no, we're not even close to the lake. We are, um, uh, at the very top of the Clarkston watershed for the Stat Finger Creek. So the, the area where the lake opens up is, uh, several doors down from the property.
Gotcha. Okay, well, I just wondered, as, as Laura Hopkins wanted, I just wanted to get clarification about that. That sounds great. You can preserve the trees and the quality. We would love, that sounds wonderful. I just wanted to ask, I just had a couple of questions, so thank you very much.
Burrows, for your questions. Mr. Gomez, are there any other questions or comments, or people register for it?
Yes, we have Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Evening, everybody. Uh, I definitely support this annexation of this parcel, uh, mainly because it is one of those weird parcels that got cut when we scribed the one-mile circle around the city. Uh, it's in a, it's the perfect location for it. Uh, the lot is, um, plenty big. I think the plans sound fantastic and to be a great addition to our city. And, uh, as Alwet and Jamie mentioned, I think it'd be great to go through and find the rest of these lots that are all kind of cut by our city limits and all. by our city limits and offer them the same option. So it's all, it's all tax-based, right? So let's go for it. Thank you.
Mr. Medford. Mr. Gomez, anyone else sign up?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other discussion, we will proceed with the complement item, which is item E two, the adoption of an ordinance to assign the zoning of NR one low-density residential to the property located at 1145 Cleve Mark Drive, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. And again, Ms. Cowie spoke about it, but I will allow, allow her the opportunity to discuss this item. Ms. Cowie.
Madam Mayor, with the approval of the 100% annexation request, as discussed in, uh, Agenda Item E one, the parcel must be assigned a, a conversion zoning comparative to the zoning district that is comparable to the current surrounding zoning category, which will be NR one low-density residential. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And counsel, again, you kind of talked about this item before. Do you have any other comments? And Ms. Cowie, can you use your phone at this time? Vice Mary Yasu.
Uh, I just would like to know if the applicant has been made aware of the implications of the zoning, uh, depending on what he wants to build, because, uh, I just don't want to see any surprises. Him, also hopefully, uh, he has a clear understanding of what the, uh, specific, uh, uh, um, criteria are for that, uh, zoning. So, uh, does the applicant know, uh, the, the exact implications of that zoning designation?
Mr. Pulling?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Mayor, we, we determined that that, that NR one indicates that we will build exactly one house and not three or five or 30 or apartments or, uh, warehouse or anything else is going to be a single-family residential, a one residence.
Outstanding. So we have very clear clarification on what would be built on that property. Thank you so much, Mr. Pulling. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up for this particular item?
Uh, E two, Mr. Medford.
Medford.
Saying can't have one without the others. So this one needs, pass along with it. And just want to say again that, uh, offer the same idea for any other businesses or any other lots that are chopped up. Uh, and give them, but offer them the same zoning nearby, just like this. So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Hearing no other comments. Um, thank you, Mr. Pulling. You know, if you want to stay, by all means, stay. But thank you for all of your feedback and we appreciate that. We will proceed now with item E three, which is to approve parking lot lease agreement.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. I'm sorry. Were you signed up for a comment for this item?
He didn't, Mayor. He said he'd like to speak with all items, but then he, we get to the item and he doesn't want to speak on a specific item. So it's up to you how you would like for him to continue.
All right. Mr. Bucy, do you, would you like to speak on this item? I'm, I'm going to say it two more times and then we'll move on. Do you want to speak on this item? Would you like to speak on this item? Not hearing anything from that, from Mr. Bucy, we'll move on to the next item again, which is E three. And Mr. Gomez, would you proceed with that item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, uh, Mayor and Counsel. This item is to approve a lease agreement between the City of Clarkston and the Clarkson United Methodist Church for the city's, uh, use of the parking lot. Originally back in 2011, the city and the church entered into an agreement for the city to use the lot for overflow parking for usage of City Hall, for City Hall council work session, City Hall meeting, uh, council meetings, excuse me, uh, and likely other small, uh, events that would require overflow parking. The original lease, uh, and there's, I believe, a copy in the item of incorporated a, an annual payment. I apologize, the original lease is not on the item, but the only different, there are a couple of differences between the original and the current. The original one of the city paid a, an annual $600, uh, rent fee. Uh, at some point, we're not sure thereafter, that changed. Uh, we did not find any documentation of the change, but it changed at some point that the city was, uh, and still currently paying for the six-yard, uh, container, excuse me, trash container that is located on the, on the parking lot. Uh, so we've been paying that bill, uh, at least for multiple years and, uh, as long as I've been here. So two years and three months and likely longer. Uh, but the, the changes to the lease, uh, would be that it would be an annual lease that would renew automatically for 30 consecutive, uh, one-year terms. Again, there would be no rent, uh, paid by the church, but, excuse me, by us to the church. Uh, we would continue with the same arrangement to pay for the trash container disposal and any subsequent increases or decreases. Uh, and as we discussed at the last work session and council meeting, we would provide the parking lot improvements as listed, uh, to, so that the parking lot will be a much, uh, more suitable for usage, uh, with being milled and repaved, uh, parking spaces, restriped. We would relocate the, the trash container and provide an enclosure for it with a pad and a wooden enclosure and some of the other details listed on the screen to include to find driveways from both Rogers and Roland Streets. Uh, the Methodist Church, uh, has not objected to, uh, the lease to our offer. Uh, I have not received a final, final, uh, but we have not heard anything back opposed uh, to the lease. There is also a copy enclosed, um, again, a copy of what the bills have been for the trash collection disposal and the schematic of the redesign of the parking lot to include the, the milling and the new asphalting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gomez, counsel, did you have any questions? Yes, Ms. Hop, uh, Councilwoman Hopkins and then Councilwoman Johnson.
I'm thinking for the purpose of the next meeting to vote on it, wouldn't we need to have uh, some sort of agreement with the church to vote on?
The lease agreement is included in the item.
Right, but you said they have not.
They have not signed the agreement yet. They have, they have agreed to all the items that are on.
Okay.
Agreement.
That's all I was wanting to verify. Okay, thank you.
No, we wouldn't have brought it otherwise.
Right.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Johnson.
I mean, Johnson, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I had a question. Um, I'm just trying to make sure I'm thinking of the same parking lot. Is it the parking lot behind our City Hall parking lot? Okay, how many cars do we have that park there on a consistent basis? Just the, um, code? Or, or?
Well, when you sit back and think about it, we use it when we're meeting in person for our city council meeting.
And our courts.
And for courts.
Okay.
And then if there's an activity with the women's club. So, um, it, it has, we, we partner with them and utilize it.
Okay.
And so this is a 30, 30-year lease, 30 years. And Ms., Mr. Gomez, if, for example, they decided to sell the churches, what provisions or anything do we have in place for that?
We do, well, there, again, the, the agreement is for the 30 and automatically renews for 30 years. Uh, but there's no provision, uh, if they choose to do that. It's simply stated that, that we would have to agree to end the lease.
Counsel, do you have any other questions?
This Councilman. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because we are investing quite a bit of money upfront for the 146,000 that they can't cancel it, you know, if the church is sold or something like that, you know, three years from now. Because I would hate to invest all that in the property and then they sell it and then we're, you know, a new owner doesn't want to lease to us for whatever reason.
Well, we would have to agree to end the lease.
They, they, they cancel the lease, then it's what you're saying, no matter what, over the 30-year period, it's only us that can cancel the lease.
Correct.
Stephen, sorry, were you going to say something?
Well, right, that's right. Um, that was one of the things I made sure of in this, is that the city has the right to stay for 30 years if it wants to. But, um, you know, the, the, a new owner of the property would be bound by the lease. One thing we could do would be require the, uh, church to record this document. It wouldn't really change anything, but it would put it on the records. I mean, my understanding is that the church has been there for a long time and isn't expected to sell out.
That, that makes sense. It might be safer, just like you said, recording the real estate records, so any buyer knows.
Yeah.
That they would be taking it subject to this lease. Not that the church will sell.
Yeah, we can add.
We can add that, sure.
Sure.
The woman Johnson and then Councilwoman Hopkins.
Is there a clause in the lease, um, to give a 30-day or 60-day notice to terminate? Or we can just terminate? I, I think I saw that we can terminate, uh, renew every year. But is there any clause or anything in there that says we have to give a 30-day or 60-day notice to terminate?
It says that we would provide 30 days prior to the annual renewal date.
I didn't see that. Okay, thank you.
Woman Hopkins.
Since it's intended to be overflow parking, um, so it, we don't have city, uh, vehicles parked there on a daily basis, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And are, do they have the ability to, uh, have like blackout dates? Like if the city is doing an event downtown on a Sunday and they're also doing service on a Sunday? Um, can they say, okay, no, we need this parking lot for service on a Sunday. It's not available to the city on these dates or this time?
They can, but, uh, that, to my knowledge, that has not happened. Could it happen? Yes.
Okay.
The lease prioritizes the church as the primary user of the lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. I think, I think the other piece that's very important is that we just want to make sure, again, as Council, Councilman Carroll stated, we're making an investment. And with that investment, we want to make sure that we protect the city. And so whatever additional language that we need to have in case someone, in case the church decides to sell, because we don't know 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, they may decide to sell five years down the road. So just to make sure that we have the appropriate language to protect the investment that the city is making in this arrangement is important.
Vice Mary Yasu.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, um, I would like to ask our city manager if, um, if, uh, you can quantify the, the costs of the trash can, um, only the trash can, not the improvements, but how much would it be the maintenance cost of that per year? I'm just trying to see what are the benefits and costs of this?
We pay 100, currently $134.57 per month for the trash container. $1,614.84 over a 12-month period.
Counselwoman Hopkins. You're on mute.
In the course of the improvements, what sort of lighting is included in the improvements? Because this whole, the, um, uh, NAMM parking lot and this parking lot are both technically considered part of the neighborhood residential uh, area and the, but because they were there previously, I feel like the lighting that has been added is not necessarily the same standard that would be if it were a new building and is somewhat overpowering. And I'm wondering what kind of lighting will be added with the, uh, new parking lot improvements?
There is no additional lighting. It will be the existing street lighting that is around the parking lot. On both Rogers and Roland.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, do you have any other comments about this one? Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone signed up for this? Mr. Gomez.
No, we did not.
Okay. And I think you said, uh, Mr. Mr. Bussing signed up for this item. I'm going to give him three opportunities. I'll say, do you, would you like to speak at this time? Mr. Bussing, would you like to speak at this time? And Mr. Bussing, would you like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the next agenda item, which is E four, to adopt a citywide litter control ordinance. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is to uh, look at a citywide, uh, litter control ordinance, uh, as listed on the item. Again, to protect the public health, safety, environment, general welfare throughout our city by regulating and preventing litter as best as we can. Currently, in our city code of ordinances, uh, litter control is spread out across various chapters in various sections. Uh, this item is to bring a comprehensive and have a, an additional and new, uh, code of or, section 23 in our code of ordinances that again, will simply provide for the uniform prohibition of any and all littering on both public and private, uh, property. So will help to continue to ensure that our city stays as clean as possible and certainly as beautiful as possible. Uh, not only has the city invested a considerable amount of money in improving by adding sidewalks, enhancing parks, by, uh, obviously improving streets, adding considerable amount of landscaping, but so have private residents, uh, and businesses as well. So keeping the city as clean as possible is extremely, uh, important. And again, this simply just consolidates, uh, all things related to litter control and prevention. Uh, and this chart on the screen shows, uh, on the left side, the current code sections that are, they're spread out, but quite a few of them are located in chapter 10. And then the new chapter 23, the, uh, column on the right, new section and litter ordinance will, explains the, some of those sections that are being essentially migrated into chapter 23. Uh, the entire chapter is listed here, uh, but again, the summary is that really the, excuse me, the, what the ordinance will include, again, are just general provisions of definitions of litter and what is public and private property. The fact that, of course, littering is prohibited pretty much everywhere, what the regulations and safeguards are uh, for not just the city and transporting, as well as our contractor, but any other private resident as well as businesses. Uh, specific regulations governing animal waste and then the actual enforcement of, and the violations, uh, of our litter ordinance, which currently do exist uh, in, in the code right now, but this just puts them all together. Again, as I stated in chapter, in section 23 of the city code of ordinances. Uh, so no real significant changes. Uh, we were requested to consolidate and have one specific litter control section also as a result of our audit by the, and I should know this, but by the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, uh, their recommendation to protect our waterways. Uh, and just for simplicity, that we have one section that is very specific to litter control uh, here in the City of Clarkston. I will add that, you know, over my career, one of the components as to how, as to the beginning of a city. one of the components as to how, as to the beginning of a city beginning to see a decline uh, and two, and one of the main things, uh, along with two main things that residents and visitors begin to notice, uh, that, again, as I stated, begin to lead to a decline. Uh, number one being graffiti. Unfortunately, we have had very, very little graffiti, but graffiti is a form of trash. Uh, some will argue it's a form of art. Uh, depending where it's placed, uh, it can definitely be an eyesore. And, and in the time I've been here, if graffiti goes up, we make every effort to remove it the next day. The second one being litter. Uh, driving around whether commercial areas, industrial areas, uh, and certainly in neighborhoods, litter is one of the main reasons why people, uh, may perceive an area to be less than desirable to drive through or certainly to live in. So again, this is very important for us to, uh, to have this and certainly for our city staff, both police and our code compliance officer, to ensure that this is enforced, uh, and as it has been, but now it's in one specific code altogether. Be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Uh, Council, do you have any comments at this time? Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I certainly am very happy to, to see this, um, uh, this, uh, addition and, um, um, and in fact, that, uh, I think we have made a lot of improvements over the last I mean, five years, six years, seven years, I would say, and, um, we have had, uh, trash cans placed, um, throughout the city, um, and, um, uh, sometimes it's really, uh, sad that, uh, you would see some trash thrown next to the trash can instead of being put in there, but, um, I, I, I think, um, we are certainly heading to the right direction, because it, the more people see that, uh, the city is cleaner, it's less encouraging for people to throw litter if they see it clean, so, um, but, uh, I also, I'm wondering on how do we do the enforcement? Because I've seen some signs that say up to a thousand dollar fine, but I really am not sure if anybody ever be fined a dumb much amount of money for littering.
Well, if there's, I mean, variations of littering, uh, typically those thousand dollar signs are, are if specifically if a police officer observes a, a driver or passenger in a vehicle, throw something from the vehicle, then the officer can pull them over and, and then summons the, you know, direct the individual through a citation that can lead up to a fine up to a thousand dollars. I believe, and Steven can correct me, or maybe Shawana, our maximum fine for a code violation, I believe is currently a thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Thank you, Shawana. So that's, uh, but the, the, and some of the signs that we have throughout the city, and we recently completed a, a full sign inventory, are holdovers from when the county uh, was doing much more of the enforcement than, than the city was, uh, but, so we will be correcting those signs, but clearly we're, you know, the goal is is not necessarily to be so punitive, but certainly for people to understand and not throw trash from their vehicle. Uh, one of the areas that, that, uh, maybe some of you on council may bring up here, and I, um, I'm just going to go ahead and comment on them are really for commercial trash or commercial and apartment buildings. Uh, we have had some struggles with that lately. There have been some improvements. Um, but i- it is a challenge to, to deal with some of the complexes and, uh, because they do have to make the investment uh, to make it a priority. So they have to have, uh, working equipment. I can tell you, when I lived in, in the apartment complex here, Avalon and Montreal, the poor maintenance staff would tell me, well, we, you know, we need a new compactor, we need a new compactor, but management was, uh, not so, uh, on the, on the ball, so to say, to purchase a new compactor, which is tens of thousands of dollars, obviously, uh, but those are the, the balances, but clearly we will, uh, utilize this a- as we have and certainly, um, enforce, uh, as best as we can.
Mr. Gomez, thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, just real quickly, I wanted to mention that the draft ordinance does include a section on penalties. And it has, it's, it's accurate, a thousand dollars is our maximum penalty for any city ordinance offense. Uh, within this draft ordinance, it contains kind of a graduated scale, depending on how many times you violated the litter ordinance, as well as the municipal court judge can order you to go clean up, uh, along a city street or clean up the particular litter that you did.
And, and thank you, Mr. Quinn, for that. And I'll, I'll let Vice Mayor Yasu talk, but to that point, this maximum of thousand, does that apply to the commercial as well as, uh, just residence?
It applies to every single city ordinance violation. Um, that's the maximum that our city court can impose for anything. Now, keep in mind that for various provisions, each day can be a new violation. And keep in mind that if they cross a certain threshold, then they'll be violating state laws. And there will be, you know, criminal misdemeanors with much bigger, um, penalty potential as well as jail potential, but that, that would be administered in the DeKalb County State Court for a violation of state law.
Because again, my, I understand from a residence perspective, but when you're looking at apartment complexes that are making millions of dollars annually, a thousand is just kind of like a penny to them in some instances as we're looking at it, so. Um, is there a way for us to, to adjust it to address the issues of commercial property versus, um, just general residence?
I mean, we can adjust our ordinance up to the maximum. It, you know, it would, well, it'd be up to the, we could set a minimum fine that was equal to the maximum under certain aggravating circumstances, but that maximum is always going to be one thousand dollars. Now, we also have the authority to sentence offenders to up to six months in jail. So that's where the city has a lot more authority. And that, the, I mean, the council could have a prescription in there up to the judges. I would recommend allowing the judge to have the discretion on anything involved in jail time, because we just don't know. But that, you know, that is provided for in this ordinance. It is an authority that we have. What we do not have as an authority is to find more than a thousand dollars for any single ordinance violation.
And, and thank you, and I'll, I'll let Council, Vice Mayor Yasu speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also would like to, uh, this has been one of the frequently, um, uh, asked things to me from residents, uh, which is, uh, violations by apartment complexes. And I don't mean to pick on apartment complexes now, but I'll just give an example, which is Clarkston Station. And if you go just along the river, on all their border lines with the river, you would see mattresses and so much, um, things thrown, just like, you know, over there. I, I think we should, um, I'm not sure if we would have to request them, um, if we have to request that they do, um, install cameras or lighting or something. I'm not sure what we can do besides finding them, because, uh, the way I see it, a lot of the times, the, the trash is being thrown by, by residents and, um, uh, people who probably might not even live in Clarkston, uh, but, um, by non-residents, I meant. So, um, I, I think we have to be very, I mean, if you go right now, I'm pretty sure their trash can is always overflowing. I mean, they're, uh, I don't know if their compactor is always working or not, but a lot of times that I've been there, I've seen it overflow many times, and, um, uh, if you go along the river, um, they have a lot of trash thrown, so we need to be really, um, uh, asking them to put more lighting or more fencing, I'm not sure, but, uh, we have to really do a lot better, uh, job with, um, with, uh, following up with, uh, already existing ordinances, and, uh, this is a good addition, but, uh, without enforcement, it's just not going to help.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. And again, the pandemic brought to light, uh, many people staying home, adding a lot of usage by residents, which increased the amount of trash. And so what we want to make sure that we do is protect those residents, particularly those who are in apartments. And to make sure that from a public health perspective, that they are in a safe area, especially when it comes to garbage and litter and everything else. So that's very important for us to think about that. The other piece to this is, Mr. Gomez, as we follow through with this ordinance, um, what in terms of additional education are we, do we need to make sure that we line up to ensure that the public knows that we're doing this, that if we need to do additional videos, it may be something in terms of the environmental committee that they may need to, um, follow up with this component to ensure that we are educating, as I always like to say, educate before you legislate, um, our community about the changes and so that they understand the impact that this will have.
Well, these aren't really, I mean, there aren't any significant changes, as I stated. It's really just putting all in one section, so there won't, you don't, won't have to go around and search different parts of our code. It will all be in one, uh, but we will certainly, uh, send out information posted in complexes, posted around the city, that here's our, you know, our, now our comp- all-in-one litter control ordinance, and we ask everybody to help us, you know, help us keep Clarkston clean. Uh, that will be our message, and we'll just continue to, to inform, advocate, educate, a- all that we need to do to, to make sure people use. I think we have about fifty trash cans. If you add the ones at the MARTA bus shelters, I've never lived in a city that had this many trash cans per, uh, really per hundred square feet, uh, or linear feet, but there, we have lots of trash cans and with the streetscape work that's almost complete, uh, that added another thirty trash cans, so there is no shortage of it throughout, especially the main corridors and the areas where the largest number of people walk. Uh, in addition, we've added, uh, I believe, twelve of the, the pet waste uh, stations, uh, throughout the city, including, uh, a few streets, and we are going to add some more. Uh, so that'll be our message, is to, again, help us keep Clarkston clean.
Thank you, and Councilman Carol.
And I, I didn't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other council members? Councilman Perkins?
Uh, yes, I, just to clarify question, based on questions on that, uh, so just reading, just reading through the evidence piece. Um, or, uh, are you holding property owners? Um, I think we just discussed this a little bit, and we'll give an example, and we can answer how this about people walk down mice all the time, and, you know, I have a coat canyon in my yard like that. And so that's, that's where a homeowner or property owner would be responsible for someone walking by. And there's, and I'm just looking at, uh, twenty-three day dash, um, second paragraph there where it says, um, which is not positive to throw left on public, so it's like that remains on my property and I haven't picked it up. I just, just want to make sure I understand, uh, where, where accountability is, is happening. I think that might be a question for, uh, you're wrong.
For Mr. Quinn. I think, if I understood your question, Councilman, you're referring to if we happen to identify somebody based on the trash they threw?
And I just want, am I as the property owner, I just want to, I think, I just want to make sure that I'm close to care on it. Mind that is the property accountable, or is the person who threw the trash?
It's the person who threw the trash that's accountable. That's who we would go after. Now, unfortunate, I mean, part of the, part of the responsibility for all property owners, residential, commercial, industrial, is also to keep your property clean. Uh, so if you, you have a business on, obviously on, on Church or East Ponce or North Indian Creek, you're bound to have trash that will end up on your property. Uh, we're not blaming you, we're not going, but at some point, that does need to be removed, uh, and.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, you know, at jail time, because, you know, someone got a coat canyon in my yard, so.
No, we're not going to, although, but if it, if it's there for a month, I think we will notify you, hey, you know, can you help us and pick up the trash that might be on your lawn, but we're not going to find you for that. I mean, we think, really, that's why I said littering laws are, are a little bit difficult to enforce in the for, in the sense of observing somebody throwing trash on the ground. Yes, it happens, but the fact that a police officer or a code compliance officer observes that very, very, very infrequently that that happens. And if, Steven, if there's anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, now I have a follow-up question as well, as well, after you.
Uh, yeah, I didn't really have anything to add. I think Mr. Gomez accurately summarized it. There is a provision where the property owner can be basically held responsible for an accumulation on their property where the depositor of the litter may not be identified.
Correct. Okay, yeah, and that, that makes sense to me. Um, and it sounds like my, my mind could just drop, uh, I don't think there is anything I can do to fix it. Um, but, so then I had one more question on penalties, see, second, um, is there a way that we could, could out, you know, we've talked to sort of having stack fines, um, so I'm thinking, you know, high school kid throws a coat can, a can on the street. I don't think there shouldn't be any penalty, but, you know, the two hundred dollars might be a little steep, you know, for, for some members of our community. Um, is there, there are ways, we're also asking people to, to clean up, you know, that's provided for in this. Is there a way to maybe lessen that initial, initial line, but then provide just guidance, and it's built to this ordinance for offenders?
Well, our, uh, I mean, our judge is a very, very fair judge. So he can, I mean, we will, you know, we've, we speak with him every now and then about obviously, you know, being as fair and impartial as possible, so he, he makes a decision each case uh, individually on its merits, but he would, he does give the benefit of the doubt, um, so you know, somebody who, who cannot afford it, I mean, we provide alternatives, we provide options. There is, they can be directed, as is listed there, to, you know, instead of paying a, a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, you are hereby, you know, ordered to spend one hour, um, and pick up trash in an hour, and, you know, the city will monitor you, one of our public works. Uh, but that's your, that's how you pay back your, you know, your fine, your debt to society, so to say.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That, that, my question, I just didn't know if it was a required, two, two hundred and fifty, but, okay. Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Councilman Perkins, and Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, this is going to be the last one, I promise you, but, uh, I just want to ask, uh, and I've seen a comment that related to this concern that I have is, I see a lot of people who, you know, they, they want to throw their trash and, uh, they, uh, drive, they, they put it on top of their, uh, car hood or something, and then they forget they have it. And they would drive and it would usually end up on the road, and when the other cars drive over it, it just, it becomes a mess, and it's really hazard. I mean, uh, it can cause an accident, people trying to, uh, you know, go around it, and then they might hit another car, but I think we definitely need to be very, um, uh, extremely, uh, diligent, and our police really need to, to make sure that these people who do this, they need to, to be held accountable, because the, the impact is really major. I'm not talking about just one bottle, just like Mark mentioned, I mean, a high school kid throwing a, a can of soda, but, uh, we're talking about somebody who's throwing a whole entire trash bag on the street, um, and I, I really am not sure if there is any, uh, special, uh, thing that can address that, and I would like to see if, uh, Mr. Quinn can, can, uh, respond to that. Thank you.
Just to your point, Vice Mayor Yasu, that's also a communication with the city, with the apartment complex too, so that we can make sure, and I know Mr. Gomez has these conversations with them, but to also emphasize that point that residents don't need to drive with the, the bag on the, on the top of the car and often forget or whatever. Um, so that's an additional conversation to have too. Mr. Quinn?
At our, this draft ordinance specifically addresses exactly the thing that the Vice Mayor mentioned as far as, you know, unsecured loads that cause littering. Um, that's specifically addressed, even if it doesn't, i- in other words, if the, uh, law enforcement catches the person with the unsecured load, even if it hasn't spilled yet, that's a violation. That you're not allowed to go on the street with that, uh, you know. That you're not allowed to go on the street with that, uh, you know, not secured on your vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And thank you, Vice, Vice Mayor Yasu for those questions. Anything else from the, the council? Hearing done, Mr. Gomez, did anyone sign up for this item?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay.
No.
Well, all right. Well, thank you so much. Very great conversation. Um, we'll move on to the next item, which is E five, which is discussing adopting a community cat ordinance. And, and I put that one on, uh, for discussion purposes because, as you know, last month, or well. This is April. Um, this month is, uh, pet month. Um, April is pet month and, uh, we had for our work session last time, we, we had, um. We had someone to come and talk to us about community cats and, and making sure in terms of sterilizing those cats. Um, so that, you know, we do not continue to have litters, uh, produced in our community. One of the things that we observed in this is that we don't have our own animal control ordinance. We adopted the ordinance from DeKalb County for sections one through twenty. So I had a discussion with Mr. Gomez that we need to, for the next council meeting, adopt. Our own ordinance as just like what we have with the litter so that we can have any fines, anything related to it specifically for Clarkston. So in addition to adding the component about the cats, we will have our own section in our, um. Our, our code ordinance section to address, um, animal control. And Mr. Gomez, did I miss anything else as it relates to that?
Uh, no, Mayor, just quickly, the, the, yeah, we will look to bring that back to the council at the next work session. Of an animal control because, as you stated, we've found that our city code simply references the DeKalb County. Uh, it's, it's very important that we do have our own ordinance just, uh, for. One, for clarification and it does, you know, I mean, really the enforcement is still there. And it, we're not going to change the, we will not, you know, be hiring. Uh, any animal control officers or anything like that. It's just simply that what we do allow and what we don't allow. Uh, the regular regulatory side that we really need to put in our code.
Did you have any comments at this time about that section? Yes, Vice, uh, Councilman Carol and Vice Mayor Yasu.
I have one question. So for animal control right now, do we rely in DeKalb County to enforce? Or is there some portion of that that's enforced by like Clarkston code enforcement if there's animal violation?
Uh, our, our police officers do respond if there is a call, but most of the calls. Uh, if, I mean, related to loose dogs do go to animal control. Uh, we've had, well, just, uh, this week, a, an issue related to, uh, to dog excrements. And not, I mean, that's more related to littering, but it is part of the. It, it's also an animal control because you're not allowed to have, have your animal, um, run freely. Um, currently in our code of ordinances and in the counties, that's what it says, that any animals under, that, that's your pet. You cannot let them run free, uh, only on your property. They're not allowed, they're not allowed to go on someone else's property. So. Um, you know, our, can our police enforce on that? Yes, it's not a priority. And that's not, you know, the main reason Clarkston Police exists. Uh, but yeah, and our code officer can, can, you know, similarly enforce that. Uh, but. Yeah, we, we don't provide when there is a call for a loose animal, I mean, we contact animal, the Cab County Animal Control right away.
Vice Mary Yasu.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am just, uh, wondering, um. Uh, about the, the agenda, I, I mean, the, the. The idea of adopting a community cat ordinance or overall, but is there any, um. Is there an, a situations, we have a situation where we have too many cats or too many dogs? I'm really not sure what is the reasoning behind it.
Well, we do, if you, if you notice, we do have feral cats around a lot of neighborhoods. Um, we have people who take care of those cats and it's just to make sure in terms of being. Making sure that we protect the cats and not increase that population. And if you remember from the presentation that we had at the work session. That if you have a cat that has not been properly, um, taken care of. That they continue to have kittens and the kittens have kittens and it multiplies and multiplies. And so that's why it's very important that in terms of making sure that we look at that population, we do. Everything from a city perspective to help, um, those cats. It's not to say that they, we can't have the cats. In our community, we just want to make sure that we're responsible in terms of not having the cats to continue to multiply. And so as you can see, that's, that's all we have now. That's it in our ordinance. Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, Mr. Gomez, did we have anyone sign up for this one?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yes, and thank you very much, Mr..
I'm sorry, hold on, we, I'm sorry. Hold on, we did have, uh, somebody, hold on, Mr. Busing, we did have. I'm sorry, we had Miss, Miss Burrows sign up to speak on this. Excuse me, go ahead, um, Miss Burrows.
Thank you, Gomez, thank you, hold on. Uh, yes, uh, from what I understand, this, oh, desire for the ordinance or request for the ordinance. Came out, Ted Terry had initiated this originally. Apparently DeKalb and Doraville have it in place. And according to Ted, the Animal Services Board is trying to get every city to adopt the same protections. And I wanted to, as a cat lover and a, and a cat owner, um, I wanted to. Say a couple of things about the nature of the ordinance. Firstly, I think it's very advisable to have, uh, an ordinance in place that. Promotes this capture of feral cat colonies that are suffering. Uh, to spay and neuter them, to then try to get them adopted and then re-release them. Um, I think it's, you know, recommendable that we have some kind of plan in place. That we not work with an animal control or anyone that euthanizes animals. That we not work with, that if we don't, if we do need a relationship with a shelter, that it be a no-kill shelter. And some kind of plan to try to re-adopt the cats. And thirdly, it's completely unrealistic to say that dogs and cats are similar. And dogs can be contained with fences and with leashing and with chains and dog houses. Cats certainly can't be in the vast majority of cat owners, their cats are indoor/outdoor cats. That do roam the neighborhoods, even if they're chipped, even if they have a collar, even if they have an identification. And there's no way to contain that or control that and to enforce, to force the. Residents of Clarkston to keep their cats indoors is a completely unrealistic and not. Very nice policy. And if we are enforcing a policy where we're. Mandating that we have a program, a spay and neuter program, that's wonderful, but we would then be. Required to, if the cats weren't adopted, feral cats are often not adoptable, but once they're neutered. That they can be released. So we need to have a humane pet policy that supports pet ownership. And doesn't have a, an unrealistic expectation for cats, that's just not viable. And I hope everyone is a cat lover like me and will agree. So, uh, that's basically what I had to say about the pet ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burl, and, and you, you are right. And that's what we're going to make sure in terms of that section. That that is what, in terms of what DeKalb has and the other cities have. And so we want to make sure that, again, as you pointed out, Commissioner Terry brought it up, we, we talked about that at the work session. That that was one of the items that we talked about, um, to make sure that this is something that the cities adopt.
Wonderful. And of course, I completely endorse spaying and neutering pets. I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing those points up. And Mr. Busing, did you have a comment?
Oh, yes. Hi, Beverly. Uh, yeah, I don't really understand this. Um. And I don't like it. Uh, I like my feral cats. And well, I guess I have some strays here too. And, uh. I mean, I buy, uh, I ordered on Amazon pet food. Um, cat food for them and I feed them. Uh, I know sometimes a coyote gets one of them here and there. Um, but I wouldn't like any kind of ordinance like what you're trying to do. Um, I like my feral cats and I feed them and they're very cute and they come up to my door. Sometimes I don't see them anymore. Maybe a coyote got them, but, um. Well, they do, they do lay kittens or they have kittens, you know, they don't lay eggs like my chickens, but. They do have kittens and they're really good too because they keep the mice and the rats away. I don't know, I think just that feral cats are part of the ecosystem. How about that?
Uh, thank you for your opinion about your cats. And again. If you want to make sure, we had a presentation, a wonderful presentation at our work session. If you get a chance. I encourage you to go back and look at that so that you can get additional information. And if you visit our social media and our website, we have also information as it relates to feral cats and making sure. That we do the things in terms of spaying and neutering those cats. So again, thank you for what you do in terms of taking care of the cats that come around you. And we encourage you to get that information, okay? Thank you, Mr. Busing. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Burrows, for your comments as well. Mr. Gomez, do we have any other comments for it at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you all again. And again, for the, the next meeting, we'll make sure that we have the appropriate information. So that we can adopt our own ordinance in this section. Thank you, everyone. So we'll move on to item E six, which is Bike Month Resolution and that is, um. For most people, May is Bike Month and we are very excited to celebrate Bike Month. Um, not only with us, but the, our sister cities along the path. As you know, Clarkston is very fortunate to have the Stone Mountain Path Trail. To run through our city along with Stone Mountain, Tucker, Avondale Estates, and Decatur. Uh, those are the DeKalb County cities that have it, but actually the trail runs for nineteen miles from here. All the way to the city of Atlanta. And so for the month of May, we are going to encourage people to. Take part of the trail, ride on the trail, even though we're doing some construction, we're going to tell people to detour around. On the areas of the trail. Um, but again, to, to make sure that we provide education on how to maintain your bikes. Um, bicycle is safety as well as, um, pedestrian and bicycle law. So we're going to provide. Um, information and resources and for the kickoff on May first at ten AM, we're going to kick off Bike Month in front of City Hall Annex. And so it's just a way to make sure that we partner with our neighboring cities, that we encourage people to ride the path. That we use it as a way to leverage economic development for the businesses that are along the path. And encourage people to participate and go to those businesses and just a good way to have exercise. And so that's pretty much it in terms of the proclamation as well as you've probably seen the flyer online. Um, Council, did you have any comments? Uh, Vice, uh, Councilman Hot Perkins.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, well, first is a, a former cyclist before I have kids, this is really exciting for me. So I'm glad we're doing this. Um, it's a, it's a great sport and, uh, um, I did have a couple of questions. Um, I noticed there was a partnership, um, built out on this, but, um, if there is specific. Um, education that was gonna happen, I noticed there's some things around traffic safety and, and education and bicy- bicyclists and motorists. Um, so I don't know if you could elaborate a little bit on what the plan is for that, uh, or if there's information, uh, that information available yet.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is that, um, each city is going to participate with Bike Month. They'll have a week of participation. Um, for example, our city, we're gonna have ride with the cops. So you can ride with our police department. They have, um, some new bicycles and other things on, um, May eighteenth. So it's a way to make sure that each city has an opportunity to show off their city, right? Um, education wise, what we're doing is each week we are going to put up information. We're partnering also with the Atlanta Bike Coalition. And they have classes online where residents will be able to get additional information as it relates to, um, Bike Month. And what they can do to be safe on not only our trail, but also if they want to go down to the Belt Line and other. Um, paths that are within the Atlanta metro area. So you will be able to see not only, um. On our site, but Decatur's and the other websites, um, the same information. And we're just going to coordinate that each week on a Tuesday that we'll provide the educational information. And so it'll be videos that people will be able to watch, um, information from the National, um, League of Bikes. Um, for people to be, league, the cycling, um, league, National Cycling, um, Society. That we can provide that information. So again, this is very, uh, educational oriented in terms of giving people. How to pick out the right helmet, making sure that you wear a helmet, making sure that you do those things to stay safe. Vice Mary Yasu.
I want to say I really love this idea. Um, uh. Well, it's been a long time since I don't bike, but I, I, I grew up. Some biking and, uh, um, my kids also love biking now and, uh, I think this would be a great, um. Way, uh, and hopefully we could evolve this to, uh, some kind of championship here in Clarkston, um. And, uh, you know, Clarkston High is pretty popular, we are very known with running and I'm pretty sure, uh. It'll be very good at biking as well. So, uh, I say, let's go do this and evolve it towards, uh. Some kind of, uh, Clarkston Championship in the future.
Okay, I love that idea. Any other comments from the council? Hearing done, Mr. Gomez, did we have any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Evening, everybody. I think you all have heard me many times over the years say how awesome I've been, time I've been having biking around the city. I'm a casual bicyclist at best, but, uh, I popped around the city today on a quick bike ride. Uh, this is fantastic. This is one of the, uh, my favorite things I've seen come through council in a couple of years now. Um, a bicycle isn't just for exercise, it's a lifeline for some people. If you don't have a car, but you have a bicycle, you can get to, you can get to work. And so I am a huge supporter of this. I'd love to see a return to some of our community-based bicycling efforts like CommunaCycle. Um, I miss that kind of thing, that interaction. And being able to teach people how to fix their bikes or fix up their bikes, things like that. Uh, so, but seeing this and especially some of the options we have now for cycling. Uh, with some of the recumbent bikes, some of the electric assist bikes. Uh, I have a neighbor who bought an electric assist bike because they couldn't pedal that far before, but now they can go on long bike rides like they wish they could. So this is a fantastic time to be a cyclist, is what I'm trying to say. So this is a fantastic time for our city to take this, especially with the. Uh, bridge over two eighty-five now and the connection, uh, I live on the bike path. And so seeing the droves of cyclists that come through during the week makes me smile. So this is a, this is the right place and the right time for this. Thank you.
Uh, no, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you. And I hope to see you and we're gonna stay safe. And see, I say, wear masks, so stay safe, um, Saturday, ten AM. And so we're excited. Um, we're actually getting reflectors from AARP for your bikes and water bottles. So we'll have giveaways for the community. So thank you. We'll move on to item E seven, which is a commitment to phase out the use of single-use plastics by incrementally. Substituting such products with viable non-plastic alternatives with the aim of fully eliminating the usage of all. Single-use plastic products within Clarkston-owned, operated and leased buildings and facilities, uh, resolution. And then, as you know, I, I want to commend our, uh, Environmental Committee. For the efforts that they started with this project. They started this, uh, pre-COVID. And so, um, this is a measure of continuing this. Um, but because of COVID and the impact that it's had on a lot of businesses. It's always good to kind of start home first and doing it from a city perspective. And so. And so when you look at those uh single-use plastic items, that could be straws and other things like that um that we may use from a city perspective. Um this is something similar that has happened in Fulton County, where they've actually phased this out as well. Um so to start with us and then proceed with eventually looking at our businesses doing this is the ultimate goal. And Vice Mayor Yasu, would you like to make some additional comments as Chair also of the Environmental Committee?
Madam Mayor, uh thank you so much. Again, uh as you correctly stated it, that um uh the committee, uh the Environment and Transportation Committee, actually, uh we had a meeting, a long meeting uh just before COVID hit. And that was probably the last uh in-person meeting that we have had. Uh and um yeah, I mean, there were actually uh a lot of proposals that were brought by the committee. Um I do remember uh we saw um a propos, I mean, uh we had one of the proposals was to um to emulate or copy a city that in South Carolina, I forgot the name of the city, but um that had done a a plastic ban. And um uh I I I think we eventually, just like you say, we will. Uh we will talk to the business owners and we will see what is feasible in terms of how long it can, you know, it it will be able to, they will be able to adopt and adjust. But uh uh we would certainly do it uh over a couple of years. But um this is a good start. We start with the city um properties and but uh the plan is in the future to do um a total plastic ban um all over the city. And um uh I mean, plastic, which which is this uh one-time used plastic, um that's what I meant. And there were uh committee members who also wanted to add styrofoam uh containers and but I I think um there are a lot of possibilities we could definitely consider. But uh at this point, this is a good start. And uh I'm pretty sure that the committee members uh would also endorse this. And I myself would definitely endorse it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. Counsel, do you have any comments at this time? Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um I would just like to um affirm what Vice Mayor Yasu said. It's a a good start to have it at least begin on city properties. That's one area where we do have control and try to encourage and then build on that and expand to eliminate um any unnecessary single-use plastics. I say unnecessary because we're in the time of COVID and all of those medical materials we use to get our shots need to be single-use. But um we don't need it for um a bottle of water or a straw for a soda that we might use three of a day. So um yes, I support this proposition.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments? Hearing done, Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone signed up for this item?
Yes, Mr. Hadlock.
Yes, Mr. Hadlock.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Continue.
So, yeah, I support it. I I don't know that it has any teeth in it. I really what I want to see is for us to have a ban. And uh what we include in that ban, of course, is where the work is. But I think that's, plastic shopping bags are the single biggest issue. Uh distance second, but still pretty high up there, empty plastic water bottles. Uh we can do something about the plastic bag. I don't think, I don't know, we can force um stores not to sell drinks in plastic containers. So but the uh plastic bags, I would like to see a plastic bag banned in the city phase again. Uh I think that was uh an intention of the Environment and Transportation Committee. And it would make a big difference. I've seen a video of a whale being cut open and it died. And they came over, examined what was wrong, and inside its belly were fifty plastic shopping bags. And so it obstructed the whale and killed it. Um not to mention that it's just a vile look of this kind of thing uh along our waterways and streets and in the wood. So I I think anything we can do to implement an actual ban on plastic shopping bags, uh that's the biggest single culprit to me that we should really be going after, at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadlock. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else to make a comment or sign up for comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll proceed with I- item E eight, which is Discuss Proposed Resolution to Update, Standardize, and Streamline the Submittal and Archiving of City Council Work Session Meetings and Committee Meetings. And that is Councilwoman Johnson and Councilman Perkins. Councilwoman Johnson?
Um thank you, Madam Mayor. This is more um what I was, um the reason I'm on this is because it kind of tied into what we did um earlier last year when I wanted to get some structure on procedures and policies for hosting and handling our city council meetings. And when I talked to um Councilman Perkins, he informed me that he had some things that he wanted to see as well. So what he did is he put this item on the agenda to see if we can come together to A, complete um what we discussed previously and to add some things that he's um wanting to do for our meetings as well. So um I will let him go ahead and tell um talk on his half and then we'll come together as a um council and work out the details. This is just the discussion.
Thank you, Councilman um Perkins, please speak. I know we went through cha- training and we learned a whole lot at the training we had um at the GMA.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the um really the component that I'm looking at, uh I think could be a subsection of what Councilman Johnson um proposed, I believe, last year uh in terms of creating a policies and procedures manual. And so mine is uh think more technology oriented and um uh just making sure that we preserve institutional knowledge across councils and staff. You know, with the assumption, you know, fifty years. You know, I don't think all of us will be here. There may be some changes, you know, um but just making sure that it is um consistent and accessible. And so we um I don't think we necessarily have to reinvent the wheel on all fronts. Um but I do think there's some things that we could add uh just to improve accessibility to uh just our various committees, our various, you know, agencies of the city and and the work that they do. Um which, you know, can also increase public engagement and awareness of the the work that different communities or or committees are doing. Um it can also decrease the administrative burden, you know, trying to hunt down records requests, you know, uh on the occasions that those happen, um if everything is is really easy to find. Um and so there's there's really kind of four, I think, things on my end um that that I'd be interested in seeing. Um and uh you know, one is is to see the different committees adopt um the uh the format for agenda, you know, uh items and and minutes uh that the uh, you know, we have adopted for our work sessions. But and but mainly that those be publicly available. Um and uh just just kind of archived or submitted in a in a central place. Um there's some, you know, obviously, we've used some various party services to to do that. Um you know, to varying degrees of the years, we have, you know, several different versions of that if you look back through our archives. Um but just so anyone looking for something, if you wanted to see what the, you know, the Environmental Committee is up to and the good work they're doing, um you know, for this resolution, you could really easily find the meeting minutes, the discussion, uh just the history of that conversation um rather than having to to, you know, have a conversation with someone. So on the second piece, and this is uh just I've talked to various council members, getting their input. Uh Councilman Carroll um suggested just to add a quarterly reporting requirement for all of the agencies, um which is uh Councilwoman Johnson and I spoke, that could be integrated into the city manager's report. Um it's just something where at least every three months, we're getting a progress update. Um I think we could put that in a real simple, I don't think it has to be burdensome. You know, we know that um everyone on chairing or participating in committees, you know, it's not their full-time job. Um but even if there's, you know, two, just a little template, we put together, you know, two or three key questions, just so that we as a council and and just the general public is aware on uh what work is being done, um if meetings aren't aren't happening consistently. Um you know, uh maybe there's, you know, there's research happening behind the scenes. Um I think it'd be great for the public to just be aware of, you know, what what that is. Maybe more people want to get involved in our committees. Uh or maybe there's questions or resources that could be uh could be shared. Um and that just creates a a more inclusive conversation for everyone. So um the uh really the final piece, uh two pieces to it. Um and I think this and a lot of this integrates as well into our uh website, a new website that we're putting together as well, just to make sure, you know, across administration and or across councils, that we have a clear list of um just, you know, contact info for one key person on the committee. Uh we have that for planning and zoning and obviously for council. But I think for each of our, you know, any official agency of the city, it would be good to know who's on the committee and who I get in touch with, um you know, if I have questions or want to uh to be involved. Um and then i- as a part of that, I know that it's in the uh the the uh, you know, bylaws for, you know, for each of these committees as well. Um I I think it'd be helpful to have sort of a public-oriented uh summary purpose of each, of each of the different committees. Um again, I think we have, we have a good template for that. We just want, you know, planning and zoning and what our council is. But it just increases the public understanding of, you know, what what we're doing, you know, why are we here? What are we trying to accomplish? And um helps them know if they want to be involved or have an interest in it. Um a uh final thing um is uh just because of the diversity, obviously, of our community, um you know, being forward, thinking in this, if there are platforms that that integrate, I don't think it has to be something that that the city is doing, but that it's uh allow for. Um you know, there's a lot of technology out there that allows for, you know, translation or sort of a baseline translation, you know, of minutes. Um I think it'd be helpful just to have that in consideration is, you know, as we move forward with the website uh design and and the kind of archival system we use for these meetings as well. So um but again, as as Councilwoman Johnson said, this is not, we don't have a specific ordinance. This is just getting it out there, getting an additional, you know, reaction, getting some public comment on it. And and then we can move forward from there.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Yasu.
Yes, I just want to say a few things. Uh I'm a bit lost when um, I mean, right now, uh everything is um being done according to the Open Records, I mean, Open Meeting Act. And um I was uh with the first council as was as the mayor is um when we did the the first committee. And um so uh I do remember the only requirement was um to actually announce the meetings about a week ahead of time and that's done on our Facebook and all our social media. So I really am not sure what this addresses because the only thing I agree is uh definitely keeping records of the videos is a a good thing. But every decision that's taken is not taken unilaterally by the committee. So everything is sent straight to the council and it's going to be on the council minute. If there's any decision taken, it's going to be on the council minute. So uh I mean, for example, uh we recommended that um uh a planting of trees on that um open field in Frenchy Forest, for example. And that was uh sent to the council. And uh it was on the council uh agenda items and it will, it is, you can go still find it in the minute. So I'm not sure what minutes uh more are we supposed to keep or whether we have to keep uh minutes of every single conversation that the council members put and I mean, say, or I mean, I'm sorry, the members of that committee say. I'm not, I'm kind of lost because I always do take, like, take notes. So I do have minutes for myself, but um there is the whole video in itself. So we can have the videos archived, that's fine with me. But to request, to to require committee members take minutes of everything that's been said, that's just an extra thing. Because I've had uh, I mean, the Environment and Transportation Committee had several meetings and we sent several agenda items to the council. And you can find them, every single thing we recommended is in the council agenda items. And if we did not put it in the council agenda item, that means no action was taken uh when comes to that. And the city attorney Nova told us that we have to take minutes. And so now we want to add this again, I'm I'm really lost. And I I think the other thing is requiring uh committee members to, they must, like, uh report. I mean, there are count committees that never had a meeting, so I don't know what they're going to report. So I I really don't see, this is just redundant, it's unnecessary as far as I'm concerned. Everything is banned, being done right now uh according to open meetings. And all our meetings are announced on our social media. And uh whenever action is taken, it you can find it under uh whenever it's uh sent to as a recommendation to the council, you can find it in the council minute if there is any decision taken. So I I think this is just redundant. That's just my comment.
You know what, Councilmen, um and and I'll answer this before uh Council Councilman Perkins does. One of the things, and especially because I started the whole standing advisory committee with uh Vice uh Councilman Mark Williams. But what this is doing is providing consistency and making sure, for example, all the standing committees are are using the same template to provide the information from what they're doing. If you notice before, we were not doing the minutes for the work session. And when we were in the training, we recognized and we heard that we need to have minutes for our work sessions as well. So what we're doing in terms of the information that is being requested or presented today is to ensure that the community knows exactly what we're doing. We have consistency in what we provide to the community. So every standing committee will be able to use the same template on how they present the minutes. We would have that information in a repository that everyone would then be able to access. We would make sure, for example, some committees do videos, some committees don't. So we want to make sure in terms of that consistency, that there is consistency across the board as we provide information and discuss the business of the city, whether it's from a city council, whether it's a task force, whether it's a standing advisory committee, to ensure that all the committees have some type of consistency as to how we present and provide the information, not only to the council, but to the community. So that is very important that we think about that, is that, yes, some committees don't meet, but then we need to make sure that we encourage them to meet. And when they do meet, that they have a template for how they provide that information. So it's just, it's not so much putting extra work because, again, if you have someone that's recording it, they can just simply have the minutes. Um it's not making sure that they dictate everything in the meeting, but that they do record the minutes for what happened in the meeting. So, Ms. uh Councilman Perkins, did you want to add anything else to that?
I can't, uh, Mr. Quinn, I noticed you unmuted yourself. Do you have, did you want to interject?
Uh I did, thank you. I just wanted to say um to sort of follow up on what the mayor was saying that the, you know, the legal standard for minutes is very sparse. It's basically who was there, what was the official votes taken, and who voted how. And so when we talk about minutes for a work session, I would encourage the uh the group or the task force that's going to do this to be really specific. And there's, you know, the mayor made some good points about why you would want to keep more detail than that. But the legal requirement is sparse. So I would encourage the task force to weigh, you know, the um investment versus what we get back and then be specific about what would be expected from the minutes, which it sounds like is what, you know, there would be a form. So I think that would be great.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Quinn, yeah. Yeah, and you know, to to the point on the uh compliance of open meetings, open records, um and I'll defer to to Mr. Quinn on this. But there is um the the same requirements that we have for our council meetings and work sessions um are required for all agencies in the city. And so that would include task force, uh standing advisory committees, um things like that. And so the, you know, the publishing of the agenda, um you you know, having a meeting summary, you know, there's a certain timeframe, and then publishing those meeting minutes or at least having those those meeting minutes, um you know, all in in compliance with. you know, all in, in compliance with, with open records, open meetings. And, you know, even besides, besides the legal piece, I think, you know, the, a lot of times law can sort of outline the bare minimum. You know, we obviously don't want, you know, agree with you, don't want this to be redundant or over burdensome. But anytime that we can create transparency with the public, anytime that we can create, you know, clarity with the public, it can really solve, you know, it can kind of preempt a lot of, a lot of problems down the road, even ones that, that aren't foreseen. And, you know, the, again, the reality is, is that at some point, you know, there's a good chance that all of, all of us or some of us won't be on council anymore. And in, in order to preserve that institutional knowledge, you know, if my meeting notes are sitting on my flash drive somewhere, you know, then that's really hard for someone 10 years from now to be able to look back and say, now, why, why did we pass that ordinance? What was the purpose behind it? And so it just creates, I think, again, consistency and a clear processes so that people don't, you know, I, I don't want someone to get off work at five o'clock, you know, try to get their kids fed and then show up to a work meeting and be like, oh, my goodness, I got to figure out this really complex system. I think that's the beauty of templates is it's just who attended, you know, what was discussed? Who voted on it? Who commented in favor? What was the general idea? You know, it doesn't have to be over burdensome, but even little things like that can, you know, can, I think, build public trust. So.
Vice Mary Yasu.
Yes, thank you. Again, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to seem like I'm, I'm liking the idea. It's totally, I think it's fine, especially in terms of, you know, for posterity. I, I agree with you, Councilmember Perkins, that, and the videos are pretty sufficient. And I think, I mean, the Zoom account should, should definitely be able to record and save it for the future. And if somebody wants to learn more about the meetings in the, in the future, they could always, you know, visit our website or, I'm not sure how that can be done, but it should be available. But my only concern is, as the city attorney said, there is no voting, for example, done during work sessions. So what minutes are we going to take? I'm not sure. What minutes are, are, do you expect to be taken? And another thing is with the committees, the only time that we actually vote on something is if we want to recommend something to be sent to the council. That's always the, the warning is to send this to the council. And we are not by ourselves taking the action and making a new ordinance. All we do is we make a recommendation to the council and the council is the one that votes on these things and makes them an ordinance or rejects the idea or not. So I really am not sure. I think, I, I don't want us to look like we are trying to put more burden on the committee members who are actually trying to do right. And I really, I really like the, the people who, who are on the Environment Committee and they always bring a lot of, you know, feedback and a lot of work to the, to the meeting. And I don't want them to feel like, oh, you guys are doing it wrong, you know? I don't want them to feel like that. We're not doing it wrong. It's always open, for the, open meeting just means it's announced ahead of time and our city residents know that this meeting has been happening. We never had a meeting that's not announced, that's just not, that's not legal. And we know that. And our, our, our city attorney would confirm that that was part of the, the first part of the, the thing where we did the committees. It says that it has to, a meeting has to be announced ahead of time. And it's always, we always check with Tracy. And Tracy always makes sure that, you know, this is enough, there is enough time to advertise the agenda item. She just doesn't put it without making sure that it's, we are following the, the law. So the open meeting is being followed. I mean, there is no, there has never been a committee meeting, as far as I'm concerned, that actually was not announced to the residents. So I don't want us to feel like there was anything done wrong. So there was nothing done wrong. And if you want to recommend, like you said, that we actually kind of make sure that we record it and archive it, absolutely agree with you.
Vice Mary Yasu, thank you for those comments. And what I want to also, oh, Mr. Quinn, please join, join in right now.
Sorry, I'll, I'll be brief. Vice Mayor made a point that led me to make a specific suggestion since this is the work session. Well, first of all, I think we should use, define our terms with minutes to be, you know, official action as the state law says. And then another one would, another term would be like a transcript or a record. And I think that if the council wants to do that, what I've heard over the years from members of these appointed boards and groups is that keeping a detailed transcript interferes with the person's ability to, you know, be a member of the body on that night, which I'm sure the council members can understand. I would, and this is something that's been brought up in public meetings before that I thought was a good idea, which would be give the chairperson of the committee a small budget. And, and we're talking, you know, de minimis, say forty, fifty dollars per meeting to pay someone to have their job be to take down the transcription. If the council thinks that's worth having, I think it's worth paying a small amount to do that. And it's just important to think about, you know, functionally, how, who, who will be responsible for this? Because the members of the committee probably don't want to. And the staff of the city, you know, they have meetings for the city council already and all their other duties. So I would just encourage that, to consider that in the task force.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And I, I can say when I was on Planning and Zoning, we did have someone to document our meetings for us. So that was very helpful. And Vice Mary Yasu, I think from an Environment Committee, you guys are doing a great job. But we need to make sure everyone is doing that same type of great job with all the committees that we're doing. And so the other piece to it is, we're doing the first step, which is making sure that we document and update our residents when we have meetings. But then the next piece is that we need to make sure that we have consistency. And that consistency is making sure, because of Zoom, because of the pandemic, we're using Zoom. So if you're having a committee meeting, most of the committees are doing it via video. So when we transition and go back, you know, that's why I had, I kind of said, let's think about making sure we look at the technology while we're not in the council chambers to make sure whatever we do going forward, we're doing the best in terms of technology for people who like using Zoom and who, people who've gotten accustomed to some of this. So that number one, we can make sure we're consistent in terms of having videos. Because sit back and think about it, when planning and zoning, they don't necessarily have videos for their meetings. And so those things that we're trying to make sure in terms of standardization, making sure that we have consistency for all of our committees, our task force, so that down the road, when someone brings up something, we can go back to the committee meetings and see the minutes in terms of the discussion. And that kind of helps in terms of archiving and making sure that we have from a historical perspective that we're keeping the information. So it's very important when you think about it, that historical preservation of what we're doing as a city. So not only ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty years from now, we'll be able to have that information for people to know. Any other comments, Councilwoman Johnson?
No, Stephen took care of it for me. So that's great. Okay. And yeah, I, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor. And again, this was for informational purposes. And on the last time we met, you guys did express your, you wanted to be a part of the process. So if everyone would be a part of the process, we can bring everybody's ideas together and make this happen because it definitely needs to happen in some shape, form or fashion. So we still have some things that are on the table that were supposed to be in the works. So if we could, not to have a quorum, but get together and bring your ideas and let's put all of our ideas in a bucket and see which ones best benefit the city and council meetings. And go right ahead.
Vice Mary Yasu.
Yes, just want to be short. I just want to let you know that, Madam Mayor, actually, all our meetings from the city hall are video recorded and they are always live streamed and they could be live streamed. And that's what we used to do. And in the future, I, I definitely foresee us doing a hybrid form of meeting and which I proposed several months ago, which never happened. And I don't even understand, we, right now, we, we should really start doing hybrid form of meeting and that we could continue in the future regardless whether we have COVID or not, that, that we need to use Zoom for forever now because, or any other form of technology to make sure there is more involvement by our residents who don't want to come to the committee meeting or to, who don't want to be coming in person. So, yeah, we, I don't, I don't see us going back to just, you know, in-person meeting only with our videos in the future. But we definitely need to consider having both and for always, forever, I guess.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I just want to say that if, I would not be able to conduct a meeting and take proper minutes simultaneously. I am on some teams through the School of Medicine where I do take minutes, but I am a minor player on the committee where I'm taking minutes. I'm not the group. And so I like the idea, if there is going to be a requirement of formal minutes, that the city provides somebody and pays somebody because it would, we're talking about six different committees meeting, you know, maybe up to 12 times a year, probably seventy-two meetings in addition to city staff's regular duties that's, would be another person, like, just taking minutes. And I'm not the best note taker at the best of times, even when I'm not trying to conduct a meeting. And then, so I think there might be a way to implement this in, in various layers. Like, for example, if we are required to have minutes from work sessions, well, we, we do have city staff here and probably we could list those and sort of put things to make it more searchable. But I think of the standing advisory committees, which are, you know, residents as well as more like brainstorming and less voting. And I, I wouldn't want to get those sessions sort of bogged down in Robert's Rules of Order where we have to have everything and formally vote because we have to know who voted how, when it's really meant to be more of a work group, I think, a little more fluid than that. So, but I think that those differences in how groups meet and what they're expected to accomplish could be incorporated to this plan, this system. I mean, I do think we have room for a, a little more order, a little more accessibility for the public.
Anything from the council, any more council members? Yes, Councilman Carol.
The one thing I would say is that I think, as I did mention, like the city committee ports, like Environmental, Transportation, et cetera, I think it'd be good to have the quarterly reports from like, for example, the Arts Committee, the Historical Preservation Committee, the other committees. Because, for example, I see the weekly reports every time the Historical Preservation Committee is researching and hasn't met for a year, I'd like to hear like what their research is. Same thing with the Arts Committee, I would like to hear maybe a quarterly report from them saying like, what are the new arts projects that Clark could consider? You know, we have a lot of committees that may be doing good work, but the council doesn't necessarily hear about it. And so the council can't always act on it. But I think that that would be good to hear those in the quarterly reports as well.
And what we, one of the things that we probably also need to do is to kind of do an update with those committees to see who's still on and who still wants to participate. And then because we have a youth council that, from my understanding, nobody's been put on the council as well. So, you know, we need to probably at the next meeting, see where we are in terms of people who are on those, those task force and maybe turn around committees and make sure that we add people if they're interested in being a part of it. So we kind of probably need to follow up at the next council meeting with that committee, the committees as well. So thank you, Councilman Carol, for bringing that point up. Anything else from the council? Hearing none. Mr. Gomez, do we have any from the public?
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Again, everybody, so information and research are pretty much what I do. I probably have spent more time digging through our city's digital archives than any one citizen has in a long time. It's just how I digest and learn things. There have definitely been changes over the years as to how we document the city. It evolves, it's a natural thing. But it's an ebb and flow of information that I see throughout the years where there's times where our city didn't even record how people voted, just that something passed via votes. And it makes it difficult to track, makes it hard to find how things move through the city in times and places. So I definitely think that this idea of putting some continuity, putting some framework around our system is, it's necessary. This is not to knock the people who have been doing things like minutes and agendas and things like that, but it needs to have some consistency to it so that when you're reading it across these multiple records, they, the information is in the right place at the right time when you're reading for it. And you're not trying to figure out how one thing was done in one group, one another, things like that. So it definitely helps when you're doing research, when you're trying to find how a vote was carried out five years ago or to see where a idea evolved and started from in the city. Another thing I'd like to point out is while we do record a lot of stuff in meetings, including this one right now, I've been dealing with a lot of ADA compliance issues with my clients over the last few years. And video doesn't cut it, transcription is required. So the minutes need to be detailed, a transcription is best. But my concern is, right now, I'm dealing with large corporate clients that have had ADA compliance lawyers kicking their door and absolutely steal their, steal their milk money. It's bad. I'd like to see Stephen and Quinn maybe answer how's the city already had to deal with any ADA compliance issues with our meetings or not. If not, we need to do something first before they come up and before we get caught with our pants down, basically. But putting more framework around our meetings, I don't see how this could be bad. I'm not sure why it would be, it's, I've, I've kept meetings for minutes from meetings before. Yes, it's slightly more work, but what we don't want to happen is a lawsuit come through in a year or two and nail us to the wall because we didn't document something correctly. So we need to get this locked down now before we end up in a situation. Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, well, please, we're waiting for Mr. Quinn. Mr. Quinn, did you want to address that?
Well, I think it's a complicated topic that I'd rather not get into too much in, you know, on the spot here. But I think that the city's meeting the Georgia Open Meetings Law. And, you know, anything that the council wants to do. As far, I don't believe that any person would have a legal right to complain for these committee meetings, but that doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do to bolster their reporting and organize it as people had discussed tonight.
If there are no other comments from, hold for one second. One, one second. Thank you, Mr. Bussing. We'll, we'll let you know when we have resident comments. Thank you so much. Mr. Gomez, do we have any other people signed up?
No.
All right. So, Mr. Bussing, I'm going to let you, I'm going to, I'm going to let you speak. I'm going to let you speak. Go ahead, go ahead and speak.
Well, it's an excellent discussion and it's long awaited, very much long awaited. And I appreciate Deb, Deb putting it on the agenda. Well, it's an excellent discussion. Uh it's and it's long awaited, uh very much long awaited, and I appreciate Deborah, Deborah putting it on the agenda. Um the, we're moving into a totally cyber techno era of communication. And it's important. Uh now, is this framed as an ordinance for the uh uh or yeah, an ordinance or a project for the next uh for the council meeting? Uh and there were concerns of what would this cost uh to put all of this together? Um is it twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars to be able to get technically perfect cyber, cyber technically perfect uh to put all of this together? Um and then a concern I have, uh and somebody, another concern I have, and somebody mentioned open meetings. I'm not so sure that we have very open meetings right now. We have Zoom and I'm figuring it how how to use it. Um but we really need to get back to uh public physical meetings in combination with Zoom meetings for those that do not want to show up because of the planned, I mean, the pandemic. Uh and uh uh let me see. Uh it's a good discussion. Uh record keeping, uh everything's on video anyway. I'm sure Tracy Ashby, the city clerk who has always done our minutes anyway for city council meetings could answer for, you know, and help us with this as to what this project would entail, what it would cost uh to get everything, all of our recording and minutes taking Zoom video uh recording in order. How big a project is this? Is this just nebulous? Is this uh is there a finite number for the cost of this? Because it will cost money to get the city up to date and its city does need to be up to date. Um, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, this is more for discussion. It's not an ordinance. This is a uh our guidebook that we will have and we will move forward with the discussion and keep in mind of any financial obligations to bring it forth and vote for it amongst the council. So thank you for bringing all those points up. Anything else from the council before we proceed? Hearing none, we will then move on to item E nine, which is proposed appointments to the Police Community Task Force. Um as you know, we voted previously to create the Police Task Force and we had as part of the resolution that by this meeting that we would identify the people who would serve on that task force. And below you have a list of names. Um we are missing uh one community resident, Kim Alt. She turned in her information on Monday um to serve as a community member. But as you see, we have um Joseph Arnold from Positive Growth, who's the executive director director who deals with teens, um Teresa Harding, who's the president for the NAACP of DeKalb County, um Judge David Hit Will, who is an attorney. Um we have Luma, Lu- Lu- Lucy Sam- Sammy, who is the executive director for the Clarkston Community Center. That's a multicultural organization. Jewel Gooding of Silence the Shame, who's the executive director, which deals with mental health. Um Pastor Carl Moore, who is with the the lead pastor with Clarkston First Baptist Church from the faith. Um April Ross, who is with the Georgia Commission on Fi- Family Violence, who's the executive director to address the issues of domestic violence. And uh Rafik Ahmed, who is with Noble, which is the National um Organization for Black um Law Enforcement um Executives. And so as you can see, we have a very well-rounded group of individuals to be a part of this task force. And again, this task force force would report up to the public safety. Um they would meet on a monthly basis, but then report to the Public Safety and Legal Committee. And then for a year, they would go ahead and make sure in terms of reviewing policies and training and procedures of our uh Police Department. And with that, what I would like to do is uh allow our chief to make any comments at this time. Um Chief Hudson? Chief?
Okay, I was trying to get on mute there. Um no, we look forward to, you know, this committee and um hopefully we can all come together and make the community and the Police Department a better place and you know, we just, we're here to help.
And thank you for what you do and and all the work that our Police Department is currently doing. And we appreciate it and we want to make sure that we just have a great Police Department and continue being more of the guardians of our communities and making sure that we build a strong relationship with our community and the Police Department. So again, thank you, Chief, and thank you to our police officers for everything that you continuously do. Council, did you have any comments at this time? Councilman Carol?
I don't think the applicants are on the call, are they?
I don't, I don't think they're on the call.
No.
I just wanted to give them an opportunity to speak if any of them are on the call, but I didn't see them on this.
We'll make sure if they can come for the council meeting to to come then. Council, uh Councilwoman Hopkins?
Um I just would like to commend the group. I think you have a very well-balanced group and I look forward to hearing from them again in the future.
Well, did you have any other comments? Mr. Gomez, do we have any, do we have anyone sign up from the community?
No, Mayor. Hello?
Mr. Bussing, did, Mr. Bussing, you signed up? Did you want to make a comment?
Uh, yes. Well, I think the first thing to do is get rid of qualified immunity for police officers in Clarkston, as the city of New York has just done and the state of Oregon has done last year. And I'm a little bit surprised that a few of the other council members on this line Zoom session who have realized this as the right thing to do are kind of mute on the subject now. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your input. Uh Mr. Gomez, since we have no one else to speak on this, we'll proceed. Council, did you have any other comments before we move on? Hearing none, we will move on to item E ten, which is discuss proposed resolution to increase the cap number of refugees to a previous announced sixty-two thousand five hundred up from the fifteen thousand. And Councilwoman Carol, you brought this to us, so please speak at this time.
Sure. So as some of you may know, the Trump administration set the cap for the refugees for fiscal year twenty twenty-one at fifteen thousand to be admitted in the U.S., which is by far the lowest it's ever begun and been since the refugee program started in the seventies. And the Biden administration committed in February of twenty twenty-one to changing that to a sixty-two thousand five hundred person cap as opposed to a fifteen thousand person cap, which is still below what it was in the Obama and Bush administrations, but somewhat higher. And the, and then recently, uh just about two weeks ago, the Biden administration made an announcement that they were actually changed their minds and they were going to keep it at fifteen thousand. And which was the original Trump limit. And after there was some backlash to that, possibly they heard about the resolution that we were proposing. They changed again and now said they're going to announce a new number on May fifteenth, but they're not saying what that number is. And I would just, I propose this resolution to encourage as the Biden administration to keep to the sixty-two thousand five hundred person cap for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for refugees submitted, which is what they previously committed to in February and what various resettlement agencies have supported, including IRC and World Relief have both issued statements in support of the original sixty-two thousand five hundred person cap. And this resolution just encouraged the Biden administration to keep that cap. I think we all know that Clarkston's benefited tremendously uh from the refugees that have come here over the years and I believe will continue to benefit in the future. Uh so I believe that the sixty-two thousand five hundred, five hundred person cap will be more appropriate. And that's the purpose of this resolution.
Councilman Carol, uh and and see, you 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 pushed Biden. I like that. Made him change, change the numbers. Think about changing the numbers. So great job. Uh Councilman uh Perkins, did you have any other comments?
Uh no, uh no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh council, did you have any other remarks in terms of this item?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Uh so in light of the fact that the Biden administration have changed their mind, do we still want to go ahead and do this?
Well, they they they've just said they're going to announce a new number, May fifteenth. We don't know what that number is going to be. It could be sixteen thousand or it could be a much higher number. So I would recommend that we do this prior to the announcement to show Clarkson support for the higher number, which it, which was the Biden administration's original position. So it's not like, you know, they're incapable of doing that number. And also is the position of the various resettlement agencies, including World Relief and IRC. So I'd recommend that we take this stance prior uh to the announcement, which they say will occur May fifteenth. Ho- in hopes of influencing it.
He has that pull, so Councilman Carol has it. So we just want to make sure that they know it. They know it. Okay?
And Biden is like getting refreshed right now on the Zoom feed watching this meeting, so.
Any other comments from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
I would question this uh particular because I think this sixty-two thousand is still way too low. We are four percent of the world's population in the United States. And if we were to accept four percent of the world's refugees, that would put us just under half a million. So um I I hesitate to put a number at sixty-two thousand because I still think it's just not even fifty percent of our fair share.
And to your point, Councilwoman Hopkins, and and I was on a panel uh with some some of our organizations. You also have to remember you have several families who've been on hold through this last administration that are still waiting. And so that's the point that we also have to remember is that several people, several of refugees are still in camps who've been approved, still waiting to be allowed to come to our country. So the number that we have is just the start, but we do definitely need to make sure that we increase it. But even from a budgetary perspective, if you think about our refugee resettlement agencies, they started making these plans thinking that we were at least going to get to that sixty-two thousand number. And then for it to be cut to fifteen, that's a devastation for them. That's a devastation on them. Uh Councilman Perkins, did you have a comment?
Uh yeah, I was just gonna uh speak to that too. I think we're all in agreement that, you know, we want to be as welcoming as possible. Um and our understanding on that that number is, you know, we all know that the 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 whole system uh really took a catastrophic hit over the last um several years. And uh and so the part of the, you know, as Councilman Carol mentioned before, you know, part of the, part of the thing that's surprising that it was reduced is that sixty-two thousand five hundred uh, you know, cap was what we felt we could responsibly do is we kind of rebuild and and uh sort of restart um things. Um just, you know, taking into account the institutional knowledge that that's been lost and people have had to move on uh to new jobs. And so I'm definitely in agreement. I think we should, they should increase it down the line um as much as we're able to, but but make sure that we're doing a service to the families that we are, you know, bringing in to make sure we we properly resource them to be successful here as well. So I think that's why we're starting conservatively with the hope that we can expand um in the future.
And again, thank you, uh Councilman Carol, for bringing this to our attention and making sure that we keep our commitment to our refugee family um in our communities, our new Americans once they come to Clarkston. So thank you. Uh Mr. Gomez, do we have any comments from the public?
No, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to speak.
Mr. Bussing, I think you signed up, so go ahead.
Uh yes, uh we might have new refugees from um other places, not just uh South American countries and African countries. Uh perhaps counties like Quinett and DeKalb. After these uh rent moratorium, uh rent increased moratoriums end sometime in July, something like that. And uh so they will be um indigenous, white, African-American, white American people uh nesting in uh friendship forests and my backyard. Um I don't know if y'all are in touch with reality or not, but we're gonna have uh problems here. We could conceivably have problems here with migrants. Some people call them homeless, uh that used to be recently middle-class homeowners uh in the very near future. Um which should be considered of a level with uh our concern for refugees coming from foreign countries, which US foreign policy, of course, has screwed them over too. I I I don't know. I I it's hard to figure out. Uh thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Bussing. Um we appreciate that. And if we have nothing else from the community, we will proceed on with item E eleven, which adopt a proclamation designating Nurses Week, May sixth through the twelfth. And that's me. And so as you know, with COVID, we lost more than five hundred thousand individuals. And it came, it became very apparent the need to have those frontline workers who were there to oftentimes be that last person um to support those people as they transition. And so I thought it was fitting that we recognize the hard work that these men and women do on the front line for so many people in our community. And so without having nurses um to be there, to be their support, to provide that information, to give that hand, to make sure that they do all those things to improve the quality of health for us, um you know, where would we be? And so at a minimum, the the least we can do is say thank you for their commitment and service that they do every day for us. Um and so that's why I wanted to make sure that we at least acknowledged and recognized the contributions of our nurses that they do, what they give to us. Um so that's pretty much the resolution. Uh Councilman Carol, did you have anything else?
I know.
Johnson?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh Councilwoman Hopkins?
Excellent, excellent resolution. Thank you.
And uh Councilman Perkins, did you have anything? Good, great. So with that, thanks again to all our nurses. Uh we we just want to make sure ones who live in Clarkston and who may work in Clarkston, thank you. Just just a simple thank you. And uh we appreciate what you do on a daily basis. Um Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else to, from the community to comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Bussing, did you have a comment? Okay, no comment. At this time, if there's nothing else on the agenda, we will move to adjourn. Um and I'll I'll take a motion on this that we move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh they say aye?
Aye.
All right, all opposed, say nay. Motion passed. And thank you, everyone. See you next week for the council meeting. Have a good evening. Take care.